The next item on the agenda will be the Proclamations. We have three of them. And so they are the Week of the Young Child, Pest and Bed Bug Awareness Week, and Arbor Day. So will Casey Kyle, Bernie Howe, and Chelsea Yocum please join me at the microphone here? Step on over, please. Uh huh. So the first proclamation is the Week of the Young Child. And the text, whereas Heartland Association of the, for the Education of Young Children, Kansas Childcare Training Opportunities, Manhattan Public Library, Infant and Toddler Services Network and Ri, of Riley County, USD 383 Early Childhood Programs and Head Start, Hope Lutheran Early Learning Center, K-State Early Childhood Student Association, Happy Hearts Day Care, Oak Grove School, the
Kresh?
Kresh? (laugh) Day School, Zoo Sprouts, K-State Center for Child Development, Ladybug Hugs, Childcare Aware of Eastern Kansas, Raising Riley, and 130 Licensed Family Homes and Centers Providing Early Care and Education in Conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children asks everyone to come together to celebrate the National Week of the Young Child, April 16th through the 20th. And whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Manhattan deserve thanks, recognition, and fair wages. And whereas public policies that support high-quality early learning programs for all young children are crucial to the future of young children, the success of families, and economic development in Manhattan. Now therefore I, Lynn DeMorse, Mayor of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 16th to 20th as the Week of the Young Child. And I'd like to welcome the three representatives here, Casey Kyle, Bernie Howe, Chelsea Yocum. And do you have, one of you would like to speak?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Casey Kyle, and I am the President of the Kansas Association for the Education of Young Children. We're a nonprofit organization across the state that advocates for young families, quality early childhood education, and teachers of those young children. And Bernie's, and Chelsea, you're gonna say something really quick.
I'm Bernie Howe. I'm also a representative of the State Board of the Kansas Association of the, for the Education of Young Children. We just want to announce a couple of events that are occurring this week for Week of the Young Child. The first is tonight, so if you're hungry after the City Commission meeting, we invite you to go to Taco John's. All proceeds during, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. tonight will benefit the state, or 20, 20% of proceeds, sorry, will benefit the State Board.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Yocum. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Kansas Association for the Education of Young Children. And we have one other event that I want to mention this week to celebrate the Week of the Young Child. On Saturday, there will be an open house at the Beach Museum from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. that will include a lot of hands-on art activities for families and children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We used to call it K-A-U-Y-C, so
Yes.
Thank you. It's a long name. Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. The next proclamation is Pest and Bed Bug Awareness Week. And Ravi Sakdeva, if you would come up. Uh huh. Is there anyone with you? Or you, okay. However it works.
I guess he's too shy.
I understand. Welcome. Pleasure. Uh huh. And whereas the Week of April 22nd has been designated as Pest and Bed Bug Awareness Week to celebrate and recognize pest professionals who protect public health and property from significant pest threats. And many people may not realize the important job pest professionals perform every day, whether it's salvaging, salvaging a termite-ravaged home, giving someone back the ability to sleep after eliminating a bed bug infestation, or ensuring food warehouses and restaurants are free of disease-carrying pests. And whereas termites feed on the cellulose found in wood and paper products and cause more than $5 billion in property damage every year, with termite season upon us, homeowners should be on the lookout for swarms, swarmers, winged termites, where, which serve as a warning that a colony may already have settled inside. Ants are the number-one nuisance pet in the U.S. and among the most difficult to control. Spiders tend to elicit fear and only pose serious health threats to humans. Whereas bedbugs continue to plague Americans as they infest hotels, schools, college dorms, residences, and other places where people gather, it has been found that 99% of pest professionals had encountered bedbugs in the past year. And a number, that number has steadily risen over the last 10 years. Now therefore I, Lynn DeMorse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim the Week of April 22nd to 28th as Pest and Bed Bug Awareness Week. And that is to coincide with the national, nationally-declared week also. If you, if you'd like to say a few words?
I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here and to proclaim this and, and spending time with us. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, you know, that's not, it's not a common thing, so it's been an unusual. I went to the, to your business, Pest Management, and, a while back, and you had a big black hearse with a big termite on top, and it's touring the United States. And it was anyways, just, you know, an unusual and fun thing to see.
Thank you.
Thank you so mu, thank you. Uh huh. Thank you. And the next person to come up would be Jay David Maddox, our City Forester. And this proclamation will be about Arbor Day. Jay David, pleasure to have you here. Yeah, it's a delight to do Arbor Day, too. Whereas trees are essential to life, trees reduce heating and cooling costs, clean and purify the air, provide shelter and food for urban wildlife, and in planting and taking care of our trees, an invaluable contribution is being made to the lives of future generations. And whereas the City of Manhattan's program replaces declining and defective trees as well as beginning tree planting in new developments, this dedication to tree planting will ensure a viable urban forest resource for the future of Manhattan. And whereas Manhattan has been recognized as a Tree City USA for the, for the past 41 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation, now therefore I, Lynn DeMorse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim April 26th as Arbor Day. And I want to thank you very much. And you're welcome to say, to say a few things, whatever you'd like.
I will. Arbor Day is kind of an unusual holiday. In fact, it doesn't really, it does celebrate the founder and the, the beginning of Arbor Day up in Nebraska to our north by a gentleman named Jay Sterling Morton. But more importantly, it celebrates planting trees for the future. We talk a lot about sustainability these days, and that, that's not a new concept. Jay Sterling Morton, one of his principal concepts in Arbor Day was planting trees for the future so that every generation sustains the next generation. These days, we value trees for things that Jay Sterling Morton couldn't have even foreseen: stormwater interception, pollution control, breaking up of thermal mass, and, and really just the, the psychic value we get from trees in, in our congested urban areas. So if anything, it's even more important than it was when this was basically a treeless prairie. So enjoy the trees you have, plant trees, be glad for the people that came before, and help out the people that come next. Thank you.
Spoken like a true forester. And last year, I went to Northview School, and Jay David had arranged with Northview School, the school district, to plant six trees in the, on the grounds. And this year, next week?
We'll be doing a very similar thing at Bergman Elementary.
Okay. You'll be doing the same thing on Arbor Day at Bergman School. So thank you very much. That's a, a gift of, that we will not live to see, grow to maturity. Thank you. Okay. At this point, the next item on the agenda would be Commissioner comments. Do you have something that you'd like to make reference to?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment about a great event that I got to attend this last week, on Thursday. I attended a public forum called Community Solutions to Affordable Housing. Obviously, housing was a big thing, is a big concern of mine, especially affordable housing. And so I was really surprised to come to this event. There was probably over 100 participants. There was a lot of people there, it was jam-packed, packed in the library. And it, I just, it was really great to hear people's housing stories, hear their background on the situation, and get their insight on some of the issues that they're facing. And most importantly, there were a lot of K-State students involved, a lot of young people involved. So I was really happy to see that. That is a organization and a group that's going to continue to meet. So if you have concerns, or any insight, or any knowledge about affordable housing or housing issues in Manhattan that you think could add value to the conversation, I'd encourage you, there's information on Facebook. Again, it's called Community Solutions to Affordable Housing. They'll be hosting additional events, so look forward to seeing you there.
Just want to highlight that this Friday is Go Green Day at the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, and I encourage everybody to participate. You, if you can't go there yourself, to drop off a check, you can do it online. And of course, what happens is the agencies get matched, and there's a lot of worthwhile agencies there, especially social service agencies, you know, and includes Manhattan Arts Center, you know, Big Lakes, the Boy Scouts. There's an entire page there, and there's a downloadable list at the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation website that you can download. So I encourage you to take part in that. That will definitely help out a lot of agencies in the city.
Okay. I just wanted to say congratulations to Jim Armendaras. He's been, he's going to be inducted into the Kansas Teachers Hall of Fame. Jim Armendaras is a principal at Ogden Elementary School, where I've worked for quite a few years now. There is a open reception on April 26th, Thursday, at 3:15, mainly because students will be there, and we want students to be part of the celebration. But it is open to everybody in the community. We, he'll be the 15th inductee into the Kansas Teachers Hall of Fame, and hopefully some of the previous inductees will be able to be there. But that's an incredible honor, not only for Ogden, but also for USD 383. So hopefully, if you can't come there, send him a note if he's taught your children or has been in communication with you. He's on lots of organizations, including for the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation. The other thing is, I'm gonna let Mike speak to it, but Rowley's doing One Tree, One Rotarian when we talk about Arbor Day, and he's been very involved in that. So with that, I'll just let him talk, even if he wasn't gonna talk something.
Well, we, in the fall, we planted 77 mature trees. Those are about an inch and a half in diameter. And this spring, we're planting, we've already picked up 400 trees from Kansas Forestry, and we worked with Jay David already to find some, and with Eddie to find some places to put those. Now, the bad news is, most of you know, the last two weekends have not been very cooperative. So we're gonna work a little bit this week. We did a couple of things last week. And hopefully, even though we've got a little rain for Saturday, we'll probably tough through the rain, because a lot of those trees are beginning to bud, and we've got to get them in the ground. So we'll have planted, probably by the time we're done, close to 500 trees. And hopefully, they're, will be in places that you'll notice. So a lot of these along our, our trail systems and along our parks. The other thing that we're doing right now is, as most of you know, is Polish the Apple. The city started this with a great initiative of a week of picking up yard refuges largely. They've also done a lot of street sweeping, a lot of parking lot sweeping. And I'm very encouraged by the number of volunteers we have. I just got a call last night from one of the fraternities at KSU, and they want to volunteer 20 to 30 young people to help. And this is not unusual. I mean, the, the numbers that we have so far, far, I mean, we have projects over the city that we want to have done. And one of the things we're trying to do is out in the neighborhoods, and we've got probably between 12 and 16, something like that, individual requests from some of our neighbors who need a little bit of help, and we're gonna make sure they get it. Now, the, the best part about this is we're gonna continue this throughout the year. This is not just, the month-long period is to try to do something significant across the city, but more than that, we want neighbors helping neighbors all year long. So hopefully, we'll be able to create that network that everybody will learn about and, be able to take advantage of.
Okay. I have a couple of announcements. First, tomorrow morning at 8:00, at the Headquarters Fire Station, there will be a Fair Housing Seminar. And there are several workshops on that agenda, having to do with an update on zoning and subdivision regulations, another on existing structure inspections, one on identifying criminal and drug-related activities by the Riley County Police Department, and then another session on the two-way street between landlord and tenant law in Kansas. And so I, it's, if you've registered, this would be a reminder. I hesitate to just ask you to come, because I don't know if they'll have enough materials, but it's, it's been very easy to sign up for. Tomorrow, also, tomorrow evening at 6:30 is a Monarch Watch Program, and it's free, Monarch Butterflies, and it's at the Flint Hills Discovery Center at 6:30 tomorrow evening. So get, the first 30 guests will receive a free native milkweed plant to take home. And you know that butterflies and these monarchs feed on milkweed. So on the 21st, Saturday, there'll be an Earth Day Party for the Planet at Sunset Zoo. And it lasts from 12:00 to 4:30, and it's just a, a good time for the entire family. Also, on the 21st, is Expedition Asia and Media Day, I assume, but there'll be an announcement from 10:30 to 11:30 at the, about, the progress, progress update and announcement about Expedition Asia. And you know that the city, city had some funding left over from the last sales tax that we directed to this Expedition Asia. So this is probably the kickoff, and I just encourage you to, if you have an interest, if you might want to attend. The other is something called the Flint Hills Regional Conference. And on May 16th, the Regional Council, and it's a seven, that's a seven-county area made up of representatives from all of the cities and counties coming together to work on promoting and developing our region in a spirit of cooperation so that we can advance the whole area and not just Manhattan, or one county or another, but we need to work together. So that's a, a big deal. The individual registration cost is $45, so I'd encourage you, if, you know, to come and listen to the people in this area and what's going on here. All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And these are items that are of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda and, for active discussion. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the Consent Agenda items? Are there any public comments with regard to any of the Consent Agenda items? If you've had the chance to review them on the, online? Saying none? I'll close public comments. And is there a motion, then, for the Consent Agenda?
I move we accept the Consent Agenda.
Second. All right. A motion and a second. Brenda Wolf is the Deputy City Clerk, and she'll call the roll this evening.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Dotson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Rickie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is, the, the next actual four items are discussion items. This, that, this is turning into more of a work session. We won't be voting, but just, just so you, heads up that it'll be a discussion. And the topic, the first topic is, is to discuss the Unified Development, or Proposed Unified Development Ordinance, including the new zoning districts, proposed established neighborhood overlay, and accessory dwelling units, and tiny home villages. Our presenter this evening is Chad Bungger, Assistant Director of Community Development. Chad, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Good evening, Commissioners. As you know, we've been working on the Unified Development Ordinance for a number of months, and I'll go through some of those details. We're to a point with our drafts that we have a number of items that we're trying to get out to the public and the planning board, and you all, for some thoughts and feedback before we proceed any further. First off, what is Unified Development Ordinance? We're taking our zoning and subdivision regulations that are now into two books and combining in the one. By and large, they are not, this isn't a total rewrite. We're not scrapping everything we have, but we're just updating it, as well as reformatting We really haven't done a full-blown review of our zoning regulations since 1996. That was my first year of college. Chicago Bulls won a championship that year. I got an Xbox, or a Nintendo for Christmas, and the Unabomber was captured. So that's been a long time ago, since we have looked, the, these zoning regulations. That doesn't mean we haven't tweaked them, we haven't updated them as a community needs come about, but we haven't taken it from front to end to look at our zoning regulations since then. The subdivision regulations have been touched up in 2003, but even then, that's been a while. So we're looking at updating them. Oops, excuse me. Some of the goals, by combining the two sets of regulations in the one, we hope to be a one-stop place for development, the development process in the community for property owners, business owners, and developers. Update using best practices from across the country with our consultant to bring in new development types and regulations to reflect those development types. Our goal is to make it easier to understand. I will say, we're working really hard on that. I don't know if we've reached that goal yet, but it is a, we are striving for that. Part of that is, we will be using a software program called Ncode Plus, which is a, our consultant software program package that will cross-reference and have hyperlinks and pop-up definitions and maps and calculators and tables, so that'll all go towards making this a whole lot easier to use rather than reams and reams of paper, like it is now. And then we're always keeping an eye towards limiting any new non-conformity. So something today that conforms to the regulations, we don't want to tear or take a change, a set of regulations, and then makes that non-conforming. As Eric says quite a bit, redoing zoning regulations is like pulling a string of a sweater. You pull one string, the whole thing comes apart. We're trying real hard not to let the whole sweater unravel. So our consultant team that is helping us, the lead agency is Kendi Keese Collaborative. They're a firm out of Texas that specializes in, in this type of work. They've partnered with White &amp; Smith Law Group out of Kansas City, who's been their attorney and primarily focusing on sign regulations, because it's, can be a sticky wicket sometimes. Gateway Planning and Design has helped us with some design elements, especially for Aggieville, as well as Confluence, which is a multi-faceted design team out of Kansas City that has helped with a number of landscape and parking elements. So that is our design team. The way this worked, we have, they have proposed regulations based on some comments or understandings from city staff, and they have created, or they plan to create, the regulations into three modules. Module one and two have been drafted, and we've been working real hard editing them, changing them, make sure they work for Manhattan. I will say modular one, which I'll go through here in a bit, was a new format for us, had some big changes for us, so it took a lot of time for us to wrap our head around it and get it to this point. And there are also some new development types to Manhattan, not to the world, but to Manhattan, and I want to present some of those to you this evening. Module two is some of the subdivision regulations and design elements, and then module three, we haven't drafted yet, or they're in the process of drafting now. Those are more the administrative processes, just how things will function. We have a technical advisory team made up of city staff and some outside agencies like RCPD and the MPO, the Regional Council. I had those flipped around, I apologize. Technical advisory team, our city staff, MPO, RCPD, the ordinance advisory team, our developers, realtors, engineers, et cetera, from the community, citizens from our community that are helping us, guide us through this process. We've done a number of work sessions with the planning board, just did one last night on a topic, and a couple of weeks ago, we did this presentation to them. And I've also had the opportunity to meet with a variety of groups to introduce this, this product, project to them and get some feedback. And we really appreciate anybody that would like to do that, to give me a call. These regulations can be found at this website, it's our project website. We have also just started a blog, and that is the How Do You Do blog, play on words there, where we've taken these elements, broken them down, and put it in not technical terms, a little lighter reading, that hopefully people can get an understanding of what we're working with. So first thing I want to touch on, our district changes. We heard over and over in our interview process that we have too many districts. I believe we have something like eight residential districts, six or seven commercial districts, five or six industrial districts, and a number of overlays. And every consultant that we interviewed for this project said you have too many districts. And so that has been a charge of whittling it down and making sense of our districts. So this is a chart, hopefully it's easy enough to read. On the right-hand side, my right, is the current districts, so residential up top and the commercial on the bottom. And then what is proposed? So we're taking eight districts today and converting it, combining them into five residential districts, similarly, commercial, reducing them down a little bit. I will note, we do not have a mixed-use district, other than maybe Aggieville or downtown, that you can combine residential with commercial uses, either in a single building or within a district. And we are proposing a mixed-use development district today, hopefully streamline that process and make life easier on the community for that.
Where are we doing that?
Um, really, I mean, kind of the, the long push for a number of communities is combining commercial and residential into a closer area, just to take advantage of the walking and the biking, instead of having homogeneous, separated from great distances residential, and you have to drive to a commercial area where you intermix those. Similar to Aggieville or downtown, but maybe you put this along Anderson and Setchild. Just intermixing those two uses, instead of having these separated areas across the community. In some areas, you intermix. To do that, there's a variety of ways. We can do PEDs, some other ways. This district would spell out the regulations so that a developer who wants to do that kind of development can come in, know the rules, go through the rezoning and plating process, and have it right there, instead of laborious bureaucratic process.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a big fan of that. Once you do that, it's uncontrollable right now. And what we normally have is somebody who puts in a R1 or an R2, and then has a C1 embedded in his development. And I don't know why that doesn't still work.
There, and, and as I go through this, there will be an opportunity for that to occur in a streamlined approach. This would be, I'm trying to think of a, an area of town, Eric, if you can think of one, help me out. Candlewood Shopping Center, that corner. If you wanted to have the businesses on the ground floor through that shopping center, and maybe apartments on second, third, and fourth or whatever floor above that, today you wouldn't be able to in the C2 shopping, neighborhood shopping district. This district would allow you to intermix those uses.
The thing I'm trying to avoid, Chad, is The thing I'm trying to avoid, Chad, is where you have a house, a house, a 7-Eleven, a gas station, a house, a house. I don't mind the above concept like we have for Aggieville and other places, but the mixed use, that my problem with what you've got here so far, just to say it upfront, is changing all the names of the zones is fine, it's what goes in each one of those zones is really critical. I mean, that's some of the issues we're having in the past. So, you know, until I see that, it's hard to comment on what those zones mean.
Sure, understand. Now, the mixed use wouldn't do what you're saying, where it would be a neighborhood and right in the middle of it, you would have a liquor store. This would be not that at all. It would be a neighborhood designed out, and the mixed use, as I said, would be an area with commercial on the ground floor, residential above. And I'll show you, I'll just jump to it.
Chad, before you leave, I would like you to provide each of us with a copy of this because I can't read it.
Sure.
And it isn't in the packet, so, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's right behind the bookshelf.
Okay. I looked through it and I didn't see it. Okay, all right, good.
Let me add one thing to what Chad said. While we're modifying the districts and renaming them, the zoning still has to follow the comprehensive plan, so we can't just have a random scattering of mixed uses. You know, the comprehensive plan identifies how you do mixed uses. What this new mixed-use district is, is basically a way to not have to do PEDs all the time that you want to do a mixed-use district, but you still need to follow the comprehensive plan on where that mixed use is placed and how it's placed so that it's a compatible mixture. It's not just a random, a convenience store, a single-family house, a car wash, you know, it's not that kind of mixed use.
Yeah, again, Eric, my difficulty is that currently, you look at those zones and then you look at the authorized businesses or residents that are in a zone by definition. If we said mixed use, my thought right now, and then somebody comes in with a building permit for a lot, you've got to have some additional information in there so you don't do exactly what I just described.
And that's all embedded into the district regulations. And the mixed-use section goes into great detail to make sure that there's adequate parking and landscape pedestrian connection, as well as ensuring there isn't incompatible uses right next to or on top of each other. To step back a little bit, our current districts, as I said, there are eight of them, for the vast majority of the single-family districts, they vary only by lot area. Twenty-five hundred square feet separates an R and an R1 district. The uses are the same, generally the setbacks are the same. Only difference is twenty-five square, twenty-five hundred square feet of lot area. And reality is, no one's building that small of a lot outside of the older part of town. So, what we've done is combined a lot of those that are very similar in lot area and setbacks and use into either larger lot, state lots is what they're called now, these names aren't set in stone, or more of a low-density, single-family. But the uses still remain a single-family, the setbacks, the lot area, the lot coverage, all of those still remain. We're really just combining similar ones, where we have a mix of things such as the multi, the apartment, apartment district and the manufactured home park, that seems like a weird combination. They are still a higher-density residential use. And the R5, the manufactured home park, as we progress, would be, any new parks would be a conditional use to go through an additional process. So, similarly with your commercial areas, a lot of these don't change other than the names, so the uses don't really change except for maybe clarifying what uses can go where. We have kind of a hodgepodge, you know, old pencil factories kind of allowed in industrial or whatever, furriers, kind of making it a little bit more modern. But by and large, nothing changes in our commercial areas from one way to another. And this is just an overview. We can certainly, I'd be happy to answer your questions offline, once I get the book out and we talk through some of the details, but this is just a broad overview, kind of giving you an understanding of where we're going.
Just so, my curiosity is, what's in the detail? So, I'm going to avoid asking it, but at some point, one of the things I said when we first started down this road is, I don't want this project to go too far before the Commission has an opportunity to see what's in it and make changes. Otherwise, we're going to get to the end, and then it's a fait accompli because we already paid for it.
And that's the point tonight, is to introduce this, give you a framework. The regulations as drafted so far are online, I believe the links are in your packet. They are subject to change. We're not done with any one module yet, so they are changing every now and then. We hope to get the drafts here soon on Module one and two. So, the details are there. I can assure you that not a whole lot of details have changed from one district to another, especially in our commercial uses, or the framework has changed in our residential districts, but by and large, where you can have a single-family house, a duplex, an apartment, what those homes look like on their lots in terms of setbacks, how much you cover, parking, those kind of things, don't really change. They all stay the same. The names change, how we combine them are a lot different than what we have today, but by and large, we aren't creating anything different or new, it's just in a different format. Let me jump to this slide here. We are proposing some different ways of presenting developments in hopes to streamline and incentivize some development patterns. So, today, our standard development would be anywhere east of Setchild would generally be considered a standard development. As we progress west with the hillsides, with the ravines and the tree stances, it makes sense to preserve more of that open space where development is less appropriate and creating this cluster development. To encourage that, through the rezoning and subdivision process, you could, you would be able to designate, I'm doing a cluster development, excuse me. And with that, you would be able to see some density bonuses, meaning you could have smaller lots closer together if you pro, if you go through measures to dedicate the ravines, the hillsides, the tree stances, the open space in one way or another. So, that is an incentive to cluster that development in a tighter area to keep our natural resources more secure. The other...
Chad, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a second. So, for the cluster development, there wouldn't be anything commercial, is that right?
Correct. Only, this is only residential here, these first two.
They're only residential, so there's no commercial, well, residential development options. Good, thank you.
Now, I will throw a twist in, that the master plan development could introduce some limited commercial. The master plan, the intent there is to streamline the process through the rezoning and subdivision process, and it would designate areas for, just as it shows here, this would be our single-family detached areas. This would be where an open space is and the apartments are, and maybe out here next to the road, you would have a limited commercial use that would be defined through this process. So, instead of having a development that is, that is limitedly defined with, this is a C1 area, and a C2 area, and R1 here, and a park here, and they're not, they're, it takes planning staff to introduce it to you in a homogeneous package, like so, for example, Stonehaven, that could easily be a master plan development, where we would present the whole thing as, this is the development, it is going to be RE master plan, and here are all the elements, and these are where all the elements will be, and it's presented as a package of how they will all interrelate within the development as well as to the neighbors, in hopes that it streamlines it, that we're not creating burdensome processes, but yet still giving the community ample information of what they need to know of how it'll impact them. It's similar to a PED like we do today, although, as you know, our PEDs are fairly burdensome in terms of signage and landscaping and uses and those sort of things. This would remove a lot of those pieces of a PED that can be negotiated and just spells them out in a zoning regulation, and that's the rules. You meet the rules, you go for the Planning Board, and the City Commission approve. So, we're trying to streamline that and eliminate a lot more PEDs. So, we do have this website that kind of shows this conversion from our current zoning regulations to what's being proposed that folks can check out. This is a slider bar, so you can zoom right down to your lot and see on one side what is today, slide it over tomorrow, or when we adopt this, see what you'll be in the future. So, we have that tool. Any questions on the zoning districts? Like I mentioned, we've tried really hard, although we're combining some districts, we're working exceptionally hard to eliminate a bunch of non-conformities or a bunch of unknowns through our district regulations. I will mention, today's R2 two-family residential is being combined with this low-density residential, or combined in this low-density residential area. The purpose for that, it is a low-density type use, and we will still allow those existing R2 districts to remain, and we'll designate them on our zoning map. Anything future, moving forward, would, would go through a limited condition, an additional step to ensure that it does not impact adjacent neighborhoods. You sound like...
Yeah, do any of these, and I'm assuming not, since we're just combining, but do, do any of these changes make, would you anticipate more non-conforming properties from these zoning changes?
Really trying hard not to create non-conforming.
But prob, there probably will be?
One percent. I don't know for sure, we haven't dove real far down into that, but...
No.
...changes.
Okay.
Yep.
Since Jared asked the question, you know, one of the things that we started out with here was, we have a problem in dealing with these legally non-conforming properties. And I thought that the company had a solution that they could offer on this, is that not correct? We don't have...
You'll see that in a couple of weeks. We have taken the bull by the horn with their help and have come together with a proposal that we will introduce on May 7th. So, that's coming.
Was that the one at the Planning Board last night?
That was the one at the Planning Board last night.
So, you can gain some insight by watching the Planning Board minutes from last night?
Yeah, if you want to sneak peek, you can take a look at that, that video. Okay, so, moving on then to some specific changes. So, we are also looking at changing slightly the traditional neighborhood overlay. As you know, this is the lower-density areas around City Park and to the east of Campus. Today, it covers a single-family residential district, R2 two-family residential district, and then the RM four-family residential district, which is what this map shows. So, the hatch mark is what our current TNO areas are, traditional neighborhood overlay. It was adopted in 2003. As you know, that area is, if you've driven down or walked the streets and sidewalks, there is a variety of different homes throughout these neighborhoods. There is not one unique housing type or appeal, look, anywhere in this, in this area. So, it is a challenge. It was created in response to some very large intrusive two-family developments affectionately called super duplexes. And I think we have drafted a set of regulations since then to stem that tide in terms of how large a building can be, where they can park, their impacts on the neighborhood. So, what we're doing, and this is kind of those regulations, we've limited the two-family dwellings to where you have a smaller second dwelling, or you have to get a conditional use to have that approved. Site design standards in terms of where your building confront, where you can park, where you can have driveway and how large it would be, and then some building design standards. As I mentioned with, or I showed with those pictures, there isn't one building type or building design, so this is a challenge, and it's fairly minimal, but it has done well for us. So, these are some of the buildings that were built or designed since 2003, with a variety of looks and appeal and depending on your taste, success or not. And we have drafted the established neighborhood overlay with the consultants to refine further this area of town. One of the biggest ones was our non-conformities of the buildings throughout this area. These homes could be, have been original to the city, all the way to something, you know, done 15 years ago, 20 years ago. And so, there's a wide variety of terms of where those buildings sit on the lots, even within one block. And so, what we have proposed is to shorten up the front yard setback. There are a number of non-conformities. I guess, let me back up one step to that. The idea behind all these changes to the established neighborhood overlay or the TNO is really to focus on the built environment in hopes or with the desire that these areas are prime for them to be occupied by owners and families. And so, we're looking at this in terms of, how best can we help those property owners meet their needs for their homes by still maintaining the character of that neighborhood but not making it burdensome on something that is repeatedly encroaching upon setbacks or lot coverage? So, one of those is a front yard setback. You go up and down any block and you'll see a wide variety of warehouses in relationship to the front or the back of the sidewalk. And so, the current regulations say a minimum of 14 feet, no further back than 25 feet, which works for the most part, but we know there are a number of homes, and with GIS mapping, we've been able to map and found that there are a number of properties where those buildings are closer than 14 feet. So, we've shortened that up to 12. We've also are proposing a setback averaging. So, on this block, pretend block, you have a number of different homes with a variety of setbacks. Property can't get back any closer than 12 feet, but we would allow them to average based on their neighbors on that block to make sure it conforms with the character of that area. So, you're not putting a home 25 feet back and looking very odd, or bringing it way close when all their neighbors are setback further. So, we're, we've proposed a standard that will allow you to average and be no different than five feet front or back to your neighbors, to hopefully get the character right within that block. So, this is kind of what it looks like. This would be the average line.
Is that the whole block or the house next door?
Whole block.
Whole block?
Yep.
So, you'd have to go measure the whole block in order to figure out what?
Yeah. And with our mapping technology that we have, that is extremely easy. You could crank it out in five minutes, and we're usually pretty happy to help.
To make sure, oh, sorry, Mike, no, keep going.
What is, in general terms, what is the front property line, just so everybody knows?
Most generally, in, within the TNO, it's the back of the sidewalk. So, the curb, a grass strip, your sidewalk, it would be right on the back edge of that sidewalk towards your house is where your front property line is.
Because one of the things you had in the previous chart, you also give them back four feet for the porch.
Correct.
So, that means the porch is eight feet from the sidewalk.
Correct. And that is to encourage, I mean, we have 150-foot deep lots, and you know, you put any sizable house, you have any sizable house on it, that doesn't leave a whole lot of backyard. And this would, again, this would only apply to new homes or building additions. So, it doesn't really do much, or there's no implications for an existing home. One thing that we have found over and over and over in the traditional neighborhood overlay are... are porches. Front porches are a consistent character, and so we want to encourage that. But if your house is at 12 feet and you'd really like to redesign your house to have a porch, you really couldn't in today's standards. So we're allowing that four-foot difference to encourage that porch, which is something within character of almost every block in downtown here. And that's the way we're doing it. It would have to be a functional porch. We have some standards on how deep it would be, how wide it would be, those sort of things, but that's the idea of allowing that eight-foot setback.
And just to clarify, when we go through one of the established neighborhoods now, the average distance is somewhere around 12 feet? And that's why we're doing this?
Yep, correct.
Okay.
And to make sure that I'm tracking right, by changing these averages, do you create, again, more non-conforming properties?
We'd actually reduce the nonconformities.
Gone, okay.
Bring more properties in.
I want, okay.
And the reason for that, and these next several slides will hit on that point, the reason for that is today, if my house sits at 12 feet and I want to put a building addition on the front of my house, and I want to put a building addition on that's in line with the front of my house, and it sits at 12 feet, the setback's 14 feet, I would need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to ask for an exception to get that approved. Again, the idea with this is if I'm a homeowner looking to invest in downtown, which we think is a, a good place for families, property owners to invest, we're next to schools, we're next to commercial areas, the infrastructure's already there, the roads, the sewers, the waters, everything's here, so why not have families here? If I want to put that building addition on, not only is it cost to do the construction, but now I got my time, energy, and $140 to work with the city.
Got it.
To get, just to allow my building to extend up to my existing building line. So that's the idea.
Have you had input from the public into this?
We've had some conversations.
This particular piece?
Yep. I've met with a few members of the Historic Preservation Alliance. We've also had a planning board meeting. Variety of, excuse me, I have a voice crack. Variety of opinions on that. But the reality is there are a number of homes that encroach further to, or closer to that front property line beyond 14 feet. And so we're just trying to bring some more properties in conformity.
So do you have any idea how many properties you would make, you'd put into this conforming category?
Ben, you remember what that number was?
I mean, is it a good, high number? So you don't know?
Not the whole, but with a sample of 100, we, we tip the scale so it's more, it's a majority that would be conforming rather than closer to half that was non-conforming.
As I drive through some of the older neighborhoods, there's an occasional house that's clear out to the sidewalk. Or maybe it was an old store.
Yep.
Front, or maybe a, I don't even know the explanation for why. But they clearly stick out and don't belong, I mean, you know, they're out of the, we're not creating anything that would be that out, out of place, are we?
No.
Okay. I mean, I don't know how to.
That, that existing house that's at zero feet would, would need to get an exception to do anything. We won't require it to be tore down or moved back or anything like that.
It hasn't, Ben, it's still there.
Yeah. But we're not doing anything to allow a house to get that close.
Okay, alright.
Similarly, with the side yard, today, there's a 14-foot side yard setback. We're reducing it to eight. That substantially improved the nonconformities through the sampling of 100 corner lots that we saw. So on a corner lot, you have a, two street frontages, you have a 14-foot front yard off both streets, makes a house pretty restrictive, and a lot of those older homes did not follow that side yard. So we don't, I don't have those figures.
So they didn't, they didn't follow that in the beginning?
Right.
So they're as close as six feet to the property line?
We would allow as close as eight to the street. The interior that INT would be to the next-door neighbors, which is really what it is today by and large.
So each house would have six feet, so it'd really be a total of 12 feet between dwellings?
As close as, yep. Yep. So again, this was an effort to bring the regulations more into reality of what the existing housing types are in our TNO area, in our downtown.
And all of these apply to 50 by hundreds?
Yes.
Or 150s, whatever they are.
Yep. And slightly smaller. I think the minimum lot area today caring for would be 6,500. The last one is the building lot coverage. Today it's 30 feet, 30% of all homes and decks, garages, tool shed or garden sheds, those sort of things. The reality is, the modern property owner has desired more space. As you can see, at 30%, there are about 42% of the homes in this, in this TNO area that are non-conforming. Alright, so 40, 42% have more homes and garages and whatnot that exceed 30% of their lot coverage. By raising it to 35%, we decrease that nonconformity to only 12. There's 88% that do conform. And I think this is a big one. Working Board of Zoning Appeals for better than five years, all the exceptions for setbacks and lot coverage that I worked in the TNO were for owner-occupied properties that wanted to put a building addition or a modern garage, that 30% just didn't work for them. They needed a larger garage to get one or two cars in. This would allow that to occur without going to, hopefully without going to the Board of Zoning Appeals and bring a lot more homes into, into conformity. So if you were, wanted to do a simple building addition, master bath expansion, those kind of things, there's a fair chance you wouldn't have to go any rigmarole other than get a building permit. That is the hope.
Chad?
Yes.
When you say about 42%, do you mean of all homeowners?
I mean all properties.
All properties.
I believe we sampled 100 properties.
Okay.
Just picked and choose.
Okay. And this is, so this is, if they want to add on, they already have a house and they want to add on an extra garage or a shed or another, a few extra rooms or whatever it might be? Okay. That's good. I'm glad we have so much space that people want to do that and, but I think these are, it's interesting to see that number. I didn't realize it was so high.
Yeah, it is, it is, it was a threshold that we created, I would think, with the best information we had and maybe then took the reality, or it was in response to what that super duplex was doing and we maybe didn't keep an eye on what the rest of the community had in this area. So we're trying to address that. Some other things, like the location of garages, where you can park, design of the homes, by and large, we're not changing. We'll carry these, these elements forward without any changes. Some other things we are changing is we plan, we would like to remove the conditional use for duplexes. So today, if my lot is zoned R2, which would allow two-family, but I'm in the traditional neighborhood overlay district, if my proposed second dwelling is greater than 600 square feet or have more than two bedrooms, I would need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a conditional use, which on its face seems real smart, but the reality is these are, majority of these areas of town have seen a roller coaster of zoning districts. Went from high-density to low-density to medium-density to two-family. And so quite literally, in the same block where I'm proposing my two-family, I could have a 12plex, a fourplex, a threeplex, a duplex, a duplex and a single family. And the conditional use is an evaluation of what my proposed use is going to be in its context of my surroundings. So if I have that variety of residential uses, it's problematic for the Board of Zoning Appeals and the planner evaluating the project to say, this duplex, either an existing house or a new house, is going to be problematic for the neighboring duplex and the neighboring fourplex and the sixplex down the street. And so we're proposing to remove that standard and then focus more on site design requirements. Parking's in the back, then there needs to be a building design that fits within the character of the neighborhood and less worrying about how big that second dwelling is, because the reality is every, most everywhere in the neighborhood, we have plenty of duplexes or more dense uses. We're also focusing on street trees. I think that's one of the more beautiful things of these areas. So we're proposing, if you're going to, first and foremost, preserving the existing trees. We don't want you to be tearing out trees just to tear out trees, but if you have to for some reason, we are requiring a tree to go back in its place or on the lot. Already mentioned porches, but we would have porch requirement, or ability to, or incentivizing porches, I think is the best way to do it, best way to say it. foundation materials. The other characteristic of the older homes throughout this area is that they are on a higher foundation. They're not slab-on-grade for these single-family homes. So above is a brand-new slab-on-grade and below is a more recent house that has an elevated foundation. I personally think the lower picture is more appealing and it fits better within the character of the neighborhood. So we've proposed regulation that would require something like that. I know there's, there had been concerns about accessibility for disabled folks, and I think there is opportunity there to address that in other matters, be it ramps or porches, you know, those sort of things. But really trying to focus on what is the character of this TNO area. And then lastly, maintaining that where your front door faces a street rather than having something that's off to the side or to the rear, that we have a front door presence in this area. So that's, yes.
For the removal of these conditional use duplexes?
Yep.
They still have to satisfy all of the setback and side clearance and lot coverage and all that?
Correct, yep. And with our downzoning that we did last year, you know, there are less areas for duplexes or fourplexes, three and fourplexes in this older part. Downzoned some, we upzoned others, so we're balancing that out for the housing need. So again, really getting back to the realities of, there's just a lot of duplexes and threeplexes and more in the area, and so how do you contextually evaluate a new duplex or alteration and say, that duplex doesn't work, but the one right next to it that's 20 years old is fine for the neighborhood?
In some of these cases, in order to make the lot coverage work, you have to purchase more than one lot?
Haven't found that in the play, in, in the case of, for duplexes in the TNO area. Obviously apartments and those sort of things in the infro, they've had to do that. But there have been a number of examples of new duplexes that have been able to establish on a 50 by 150 lot.
So could you explain to me why number one graphic is, no, go back. The first graphic, that's not okay, but the next two are okay.
Sure. The orientation's a little funky there. I apologize for that. So the first graphic where you have someone's front door facing a side yard is just not characteristic of the area. Two and three envision for number two that our street would be to the out unit two, and so you'd have that front door, and then over here envision that this, we flip-flop those images around, so it's not really oriented the same. I apologize. But again, you have a front door facing the street.
So we, only one front door? So the characteristic that we're trying to meet is only one door is facing the street?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And nothing facing, or the units, both units couldn't face, only face the side yard as the image wants it, but I think that's very. I think I said that right. Okay, the other one, and we knew going in, this one was somewhat controversial and my instincts were right. So an accessory dwelling unit is, or an ADU, which they're commonly referred to, is a secondary dwelling in an owner, or as we proposed it, in an owner-occupied, single-family property. These have been around for better than 30 years. Boulder's had it since the mid-'80s. Other communities have had them for a long time, and we saw this as an opportunity to address our affordable housing, the affordable housing topic by introducing different housing types. I'll be very truthful, this is really nothing more than a two-family, except we would require an owner to be living in that, one of those dwellings. So instead of having two renters or, you know, two homes rented, dwellings rented in that building, one of those would have to be an owner-occupied space. That's important to me, and, and I've said this openly, and I'll say it again, that is an important feature to this for us for these reasons. One, the idea is, and we know, especially in these older parts of town or near campus, near downtown, they are, they, they make sense to be an investment property, that they could be a rental property, and that brings a certain value for that property. And I would contend that that value is higher than what a single-family owner can afford, just because it is a commercial property, you know, it is an investment, they're making money off of it, and someone who wants to live there by themselves or with their family can't pay that difference. The ADU would allow for that owner to have some additional income through that rent to close that gap, to make it more in line with that investment property so they can purchase these homes. I will say they won't, this doesn't work for every owner-occupied property, I don't think, and, and the cities that have done this have proven that it's not just a rash of ADUs popping up in every single-family lot across the city. It is going to be a small number, but we think it's a tool in the toolbox for the affordability housing topic. We also feel that having that owner-occupied element will reduce some of the, the less desirable things with having a rental right next to you. If I own a house, I'm not going to allow the person I rent to have mega parties or to play their bongos, midnight, or their rock music or whatever. I'm right next door to them, in some cases above or below them, and so I'm going to have a little bit more control than if that was some other property. As well as, you know, it's my investment, I live there, so I don't want to do anything to diminish my, my property investment. So those are the things we've seen.
Chad?
Yes?
How would you know? How would you know that the owner is there?
Let me get through, yeah, we'll address that.
Oh, that's there.
Yep, we'll get through that. So again, some more benefits, more efficient use of land, so we're not putting more houses, providing, I mentioned a number of these already. And we've also seen, in doing some research, that it's, it's also a way for some empty nesters, some retired folks to stay in place, to retire in place. So maybe they move to that apartment above the garage and they rent the front house, the main house, to a family. There are those options there. So let me go through the types of ADUs and Commissioner Ready, I'll get to your question. We're envisioning two types. You're integrated, which is basically mixed into your house one way or another, you convert the basement, the upper floor, however, it's within the confines of the house. And then the independent structure or ADU would be above the garage as the image I just showed, or a detached, smaller structure, something permanent in the backyard. So two different types, and these are some examples, some pictures that we have seen, you know. You know, these integrated units are nothing more than, I said, an upstairs apartment, but that owner lives on the ground floor or what have you. The independent unit would be something like this, above the detached garage. This one is just a small home for the tenant to live in, separate from the existing building. The idea with these independent units, see if I, let me get through the, this portion here. We would, we're proposing to allow them in most any single-family residential district. With the firm understanding that the reality is this won't be just blossom up and explode everywhere because of the things I mentioned, that people, this will be an investment, and people just don't want to be a landlord in their backyard. And so, we're allowing this as proposed throughout the community. All this is subject to change, but this is what we have there. The minimum lot sizes, these are basically in line with the current regulations. And occupancy would be no more than two residents in an ADU, so keeping that occupant load, low, single person or a couple at best is what we'd look at, and only one ADU on a property. So, you couldn't have three or four of these stuck in your backyard. We would regulate the size, so, wouldn't allow you to have, convert your whole backyard to an ADU, it'd be no more than 80, or excuse me, 800 square feet, so something relatively small. Similarly, within, integrated with that, with the house, that you couldn't have, devote two floors to your ADU and have two floors for your family. It would be 30% of the gross area, or no more than 80, 800, excuse me, whichever's less. So, really trying to keep it accessory, small, not dominant within the structure. Parking would require one additional parking space. Again, we, the idea is, one person, a couple, lower rent, and so, we wouldn't have to have multiple parking spaces for these things. And they would need to follow similar setbacks to the house, or the detached garage or detached structure. We do have some design standards, really for an integrated in the house, nothing would change, you'd just have to make it look like the house. An independent structure, we want it set back in the backyard, and we want it blended into the property, so it's inconspicuous to the rest of the neighborhood. Any questions on ADUs? This was a hot topic on some of the groups we've talked with, and so...
Yeah, that, that other slide you had there, we had the asterisk and it said mid-density leads you to believe the ADUs are only allowed there, but you said every place.
So, these would be all the districts that they would be allowed. This asterisk would only be allowed in this apartment area or the RM area when it's incorporated with the established neighborhood overlay.
So, there's no restriction on the other ones?
Correct.
Now, what if a homeowners association said they don't like ADUs, could they restrict it?
They certainly could, yep, they can certainly trump, an HOA can certainly trump these regulations.
The, the 800 square feet maximum, so that's 20 by 40 or something?
Yeah.
If I looked online now, where you said I should look originally, will I find things like, you must include a bathroom, you must include a kitchen? I mean, what, what I wouldn't want to have happen are just crash pads?
Sure.
So, is that in there or not?
It's not in there, but they would have to follow the building code to establish a second dwelling. So, the building code would, would require the cooking, the cleaning, you know, the wash facilities, the separation of units, that's all integrated within the building code, we would just reference to or rely upon it.
Well, in a rental house, for example, if you go to where some students might be living, not everybody has a kitchen or a bathroom in their own room, right?
So, let me address Commissioner Reddy's question about how do we know if this is owner-occupied or not? And then I'll circle back to your question about a rental house. How we envision this to work is, if you own a house and you say, this is great, this would help my mortgage, help me, you know, help me out, and I want to help out a graduate student or, you know, an undergrad, live in my backyard, or above my garage. How we envision it, they would apply for a building permit. We would make sure the design meets these standards, as we spelled it out. We would then also require you to complete an affidavit of sorts. Again, this, these pieces will come in Module Three, so we haven't got the exact wording right, but as envisioned, you would be required to file an affidavit that says, I Chad Bungier own this house, I'm establishing an ADU that conforms to all these standards, and everyone that, anyone that buys a home after me has to live in it, or the ADU has to be removed. Then we'll register it, and we'll probably do some sort of annual or biannual check-in with them, register that, yes, I do live here and I haven't sold it, and that covenant would run with the land, or that affidavit would run with the land. So, other communities, Johnson County has done this with, with success, although they have a very small number, I think 20, in the last five or seven years since their ADU regulations have been in place, but they do something almost identical. So, if I want to establish an ADU, I, I register, get my building permit, file this affidavit that reminds me that I can't rent out this property, and alerts future owners, or the next owner and the owner after that, that that person has to live in there in order to utilize the ADU. Now, the question from there is, what if someone ignores that affidavit? And I'll have to rely upon your direction of how hard we would enforce this if this would go through. I would envision it with, with your approval, that we would be pretty heavy-handed in enforcement, that it's very clear that this has to be owner-occupied, and the affidavit is there to remind the owner and future owners that it has to be owner-occupied, and if someone violates that affidavit, or ignores that affidavit and violates these regulations, that we would enforce fully to have that element, those elements of the ADU removed, so it isn't a dwelling unit.
Does the, does the affidavit covers, is it just generally the owner has to live here, or does it cover these, like, maximum occupancy rules?
Yeah, I would imagine it would cover those details also.
Then I want to zero in on what you mean by check-in. What it, what do you mean by we would check-in?
I would see it similar to, well, it, it would be your comfort level and the community's comfort level. It could be something as simple as our rental registration, where we send you a letter every two years that say, you have an ADU, please re-register, and on that is, you know, signature that says, yes, I, I owner, live here. Or it could be to the extreme, or an extreme of inspection, that we would go in and inspect and see that your family's pictures are hanging on the walls and those sort of things, I don't know. There's a variety there, and it's going to be a comfort level of the community and, and the commission, but I think there's some elements there through registration and inspection and/or inspection that we could, that check-in loosely would address.
Okay.
You know, the, when you look at the planning board, and the number of exceptions that are granted, I don't have all that much confidence that this is going to work that way. I, I think there are probably legal issues, but we'll have to look into those later. In other words, you're telling a homeowner that if he sells that house, he's got to tear, and it's, he's going to sell it for rental, he's got to tear down that thing in the back. I'm just not sure that's going to work. So, I'm, I'm skeptical, and I want to see what's going to be in those houses, whether it's the same kind of things that apply to where we want people to live, a bathroom, a kitchen, all the right exit doors, I mean, that part you'll probably get right, but...
And, so, to your, then your question of the rental house, could only be for owner-occupied. We would establish a full-blown second dwelling unit, so it would need to meet all of code's requirements, and if it doesn't, then it doesn't get that...
Yeah, I was talking about the one that's integrated.
Right.
Because in a rental house, you don't necessarily have your own bathroom or kitchen, right?
If there are two dwelling units, if I live in a, a house that was converted into two units, they should be entirely separated, and both should have kitchens and bathrooms and whatnot.
So, it's not just a separate bedroom?
Correct. Now, I could have four bedrooms in my one house and rent it all out, but with two separate dwelling units, they, by the zoning and building code...
So, it's fundamentally different than what we're requiring of rental homes?
Yeah, yes, sir, yes. To your point about enforcement, I've, I've stood before a number of folks that said if we can't get enforcement right, if I don't have the backing to say, someone violates that owner-occupied standard, because it would be a violation, I think it's real clear in how we've defined it and how we would administer it, but if we don't have full support to enforce this, then I can't say I'm real, I really want to go through this, because I, without that enforcement, this doesn't really work for us in our community, for what we're trying to accomplish. It just really becomes a, another duplex, and I think it could become more, but in order for it to become more, we have to have an enforcement piece to it.
That was my exact same line of thinking as well. If you can't get the enforcement part of it right, then a lot could go wrong.
Exactly.
But I also have a problem, just a fundamental philosophical problem about the inspection issue as a whole, and again, if we force inspection, inspections on UDOs, yet again, we're treating one segment of the market very, very differently than we treat the rest of the segment of the market. And so, on a broader level, I have a problem with that. So, I, I totally agree on the enforcement side, so if there was anything other than an inspection that we could explore?
Sure.
That would help that issue, I'd be open to hearing, but...
The other piece I didn't mention is, I can only imagine where these would occur, they're either existing single-family neighborhoods, or they're budding single-family neighborhoods, where those neighbors will keep an eyeball out. And so, if every six months, there's a new set of cars in the parking lot, or in the driveway, or, you know, they only come for the weekend, and you never see them during the week, or only once a month, I would imagine the neighborhood will rat these ADUs out if they're not following the regulation. And if we register and we do those bits, I don't know if we have to go to the extreme of inspections, but that may be one avenue also.
I have some concerns about enforcement. We have older homes where every bedroom is rented out, and the city does absolutely nothing about that. And they use one common bathroom and a common kitchen, which is more like a, I can't even say, it's like a boarding house.
Sure.
But there's zero enforcement with regard to that scenario, and they happen around the, and, and they are happening, I believe, in the newer homes too, although they have more bathrooms, in the newer homes. But we have been, I, I think, disadvantaged with our ability to enforce anything. So, if you, when you say owner-occupied, you know, that's a one-year, two-year, three-year deal, and then it goes off the rail. There's, there's no way you're going to know in year three. And the neighbors, I mean, I'm not willing to buy into a system where the, you rely on the neighbors to report the neighbors, I'm not going to do that. But I also, you know, I've seen the Board of Zoning Appeals approve things too, that in, so, there's a house in Northview that had a basement, and it was originally approved as a bed and breakfast for the basement apartment, and then they went to the Board of Zoning Appeals and got it legitimized to be a duplex then, because the owner was selling and moving out. I'm just saying, there are enough inconsistencies and that I don't, we can't enforce what we've got, is how, I, I, it's the enforcement piece that I can't buy into.
So, I'm going to, uh, put my neck out a little bit and give some support to the Board of Zoning Appeals in that, one, they have a very tough job of trying to appease what a property owner wishes and desires with their property. A lot of times, they're, they're owner-occupied properties and not for rentals. Two, they can't make exceptions or variances of uses like that. So, I'm not for sure what that, that specifics are there, but, single-family has to stay single-family, they can do the conditional uses with bed and breakfast, but they have a very tough job. And I will say, our staff, Community Development Department staff, meets with multiple times over, property owners, and we vet those requests before they even get to the BZA, and if it's something that we don't feel can be supported, that we know will impact the neighborhood, that is out of character, we say you can apply, but you don't have a whole lot of chance with our, without a recommendation. So, the Board of Zoning Appeals has a tough route or a tough task to have. Our staff vets a lot of that stuff, so what you see before them are a number of projects that at least meet those standards, and then it's a matter of what the neighborhood and the community feels appropriate.
I just see five exceptions on one BZA little house, clear to the back line, clear to the side yards, out to the front, I mean...
And again, that goes back to...
Lot coverage, it's like five of them at a time.
And that goes back to some of the standards that I mentioned in the established neighborhood overlay, where maybe the setbacks don't conform to the reality, and so, we're trying to address that with this. But again, I, there are a number of ways I think we can address it, the enforcement, if you all are willing to support this housing type with the ability to enforce.
Chad?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm on the fence with the ADU, and not only because of enforcement, but I feel like it also can, we won't know if it's being used as an Airbnb, we, we won't know some of these things. And as it is, we're having a, a hard enough time, regardless of how much staff we have, with registration and inspection, and I think we're kind of adding an extra burden on ourselves without really having to do that. And like I said, I don't even know which ones are Airbnbs right now. So, this can be, become, become that, even if it's an owner-occupied. I live in a neighborhood, but I'm in and out of my house so many times, I don't know, I don't see how many cars are parked in one, or if they're switching over, so you can't depend on the neighbors to give a call.
And, and that wouldn't be our enforcement strategy, but I, I'm fairly confident that if there was a problem...
Right. I just want to, you know, that I'm on the fence with this.
Okay, very good.
I'm not quite sure how we, the enforcement part, and then it can evolve into so many things right now, that I'm kind of hesitant about it.
Yeah, I, I just want to comment, the main thing that disturbs me on this is, you know, we had an R1 district, and everybody expected one family to be there, and this destroys it. And it basically does that to your, to, to your RE and your RL district, because the RL includes, you know, R1. So, people have an expectation that it's going to be one family living next to me, that, that's thrown out the window.
Sure.
And so, for that reason, I, I probably am not going to support this, because I also agree, it's, it's going to be abused. I can see all kinds of strange things happening, like, you know, I could buy a house for my daughter, she would be the resident, go into K-State, and then I could build this, you know, this other apartment, and what you'd actually have is, you know, I'd have my daughter and her friends living there for four years, and there's no way you could enforce that, it'd be 100% legal. People are doing that now, so I just see all kinds of room for problems, I'm just not ready to go with this right now.
Sure. And we have talked with a number of cities, Boulder, Austin, both college towns, that, that have regulations to get to that in terms of how many combined unrelated folks you can have. They have regulations that get towards the Airbnb, so you can't rent more, you know, you have to be living in it more than 275 days out of the year, and you, both parties do, so, I, I know there are, if there is a will, there is a way to write regulations. do, so I know there are, if there is a will, there's a way to write regulations, and if there's a will, there's a way to enforce these. It's a matter of what the community wants and the commission wants in terms of this housing product.
So are you going to be proposing Airbnb regulations?
Yes.
Are you, eventually?
Eventually, in Module Three.
In this short-term rental, or whatever you...
It'll be called a short-term rental regulation, and that'll come in Module Three.
Do you currently have a way, do you monitor that the owner lives in bed and breakfast facilities? Do you ever check back after the initial approval?
Truthfully, no.
I don't think so?
Right.
There's no enforcement?
We haven't had a need to enforce. We have the mechanism to enforce, but...
I think there's some wandering off, is all I'm saying. I'm just, that's my little gauge about what, about something like this and the ability to enforce, and there have been, you know, just other instances of enforcement that just don't work. If you bought a home in a traditional neighborhood, you would probably expect it to continue to be a single-family, and to me, this goes off that rail in allowing all kinds of things to happen. So one might have a tiny house in the backyard, on a foundation, I don't know what, one would have one above the garage. I'm just saying that...
I do want to also point out, I want to go back to a comment...
You're going to, if you want a single-family, you would be driving everyone out into the outskirts of the community by, just, you know, anyway, I'm just...
Since we only have a couple of sides left, can we get through those?
Yep.
Because I'd like to hear the public before we get much further along in this.
You bet. So last piece I have here are tiny home villages. This is a fairly new housing product across the country. Today, if built right to the zoning regulations, you could put a small home somewhere around 350 square feet on a residential lot, anywhere in town, as long as it's built in the building Obviously, the idea behind these is that they're smaller, they're cheaper, less environmental footprint, the qualities go on and on for the people that like these tiny homes, but putting it on a standard residential lot defeats that purpose, when you got a, you build a $40,000 tiny home, and you put it on a $20,000 lot. So the notion here would be to allow them similar to a manufactured home park, in terms that it's in a closer, smaller, more dense development. Each village would have, be a minimum of five acres, so you couldn't just make a village, you know, on two lots or whatnot. They would be conditional use in the mixed residential district, and then, as you can see, those standards there, so they are on a smaller lot. Our minimum lot size for a residential, single-family residential, 6,500, this is a one-sixth about the size of that, so smaller, more dense, would have its internal streets, private street network, limits on homes, those sort of things, so these would be stick-built, built on foundation. That's been the one sticking point with a number of tiny homes in Manhattan, so there's really a very limited housing, permanent housing type that can be established in Manhattan. You have your stick-built on a permanent foundation, you could have something similar built in a manufacturing plant, like Warcraft or wherever, that's built to our building standards, brought into town, put on a permanent foundation, or there are mobile, manufactured home, mobile home, built to a HUD standard that has a HUD placard. Those are the only real, generally, three types of permanent housing that you can have. Something built on a chassis with wheels that keep the wheels on, and you pull in, is more built like an RV, and our building code and our code of ordinance does not view that as permanent living, temporary living, recreational living, and so this regulation would require you to put it on a permanent foundation, built to our building permit, or building requirements, but could do it on a more dense development pattern. So that is, majority of, and I had some pictures, so this would, as great as that thing looks, would generally not be allowed in the city, because it's built more like an RV, not a permanent home. These are the kind of images that we would like to see with this tiny home village.
How did you arrive at 400 square feet as the maximum?
It's kind of what we see as those tiny homes are. Again, going in the notion that someone would like to pick them up and move them, one way or another, they have to be able to be transported, and so they have, generally speaking, they have maximum width and area, and 400 is about the maximum.
Have you talked with tiny house people?
A few, yeah. The other piece is, we don't want these to become very large, and then you defeat the purpose of a tiny house. You know, if you have a thousand-square-foot tiny house, it's really not a tiny house, and you're putting on a 1,200-square-foot lot, and it's just too dense.
So you would limit the ability to build on to a tiny house?
Yep.
You couldn't build a garage, or, I'm just saying, it depends on the lot, and you mentioned 1,200-square-foot lot, right?
Right. Envision a manufactured home park, red-bud or countryside.
Well, I've been out to Colonial Gardens, where they have the three tiny houses, and the lots, by the, when you put a tiny house on it, the lots appear to be really large, because the house is so small.
Right.
And so I just wondered, I wanted to be sure that, I want to be sure that some advocates of tiny houses have some input into the standards we're developing, so, I'm not a good reference, probably.
So Chad?
Yes.
When the discussion of tiny homes first came up, it's very trendy and everything, but there was, some of the concerns were bankers, so do they get loans from banks, and how do they do this? If we're going to set off a certain area for such homes, I don't know how the banking industry, because they said that banks, a few bankers said they don't do the loans for tiny homes, tiny houses, tiny homes, and they have to follow the international codes, because their codes would be very different, just because of the size alone, so are they following our codes or international codes? How does all of that work with the tiny homes? And do the international codes have codes for tiny homes?
So they would follow our international residential code, and Brad, if you have specific questions, but they would follow our residential building code. I believe that that organization that establishes those building codes have created a set of regulations that a community can adopt, that would allow for these permanent-type homes to have a small headroom loft and ladder to get to that second floor loft, rather than being all on one floor, and some of those things that aren't allowed today in our residential building code. There is at least forthcoming, an opportunity to adopt those standards if the community chooses. There's something there. In terms of financing, we haven't talked with any bankers. I would imagine, I don't know for sure, but I would imagine that the reluctance or the hesitation is that when you put a tiny home on a chassis and with its wheels, it's really just personal property, not a house. Where we're proposing, it's on a foundation, it's permanent, and so although it's tiny, it's unique, it's not what probably a residential loan officer deals with day-to-day, it's more close to a regular house than someone's camper, so I would imagine a home loan...
And how is it different than a mobile unit that doesn't have wheels on it?
So these would be, well, Brad, correct me if I say anything wrong, those mobile home units that come in on a chassis and put up on blocks and pillars, they are built to the HUD standards, and they actually have a placard that says they're built to those standards in a manufacturing facility. Yes, they're on wheels, or they come in on a chassis and put on cinder blocks or whatnot, or not a permanent foundation that you and I know, but they're built to that standard. A lot of these tiny homes are not built to any standard, or if they are, they more closely resemble a recreational vehicle standard and not a permanent building code.
I just want to be cautious how we do this, if there's going, and I want us to look at, I know you've probably talked to a few owners of these homes, but also how the trend is looking in places that already have a village, a tiny home village. Is that trend going, or is it slowing down, and how does that work? And so I think that we need a little bit more information. I'm glad we're looking into some options, since our population has a wide range of ages, especially young, we have a lot of young people and young professionals, so...
I think the last time we inquired with Brad, the international building codes hadn't been released, and in the meantime, there was a tiny house associated, set of standards developed by tiny houses. So that is changing, and other communities are adopting it. My interest is to allow this reach the point that we're comfortable, so that if someone wants to develop a tiny house village, they're able to, instead of the current environment where they can't. I mean, we don't allow a tiny house anywhere outside of a mobile home court right now, and so to me, there's an in-between, and so that's what I'd be interested in pursuing, is, I don't know about 400 feet, 400 square feet maximum, but, you know, surely some of these other communities that have tiny house vill, and I don't know, I, the idea of a village was that they were so passionate about it, and so interested in downsizing and living small, that they would have a lot in common with each other, and build their own sense of community within that. I'm not interested in allowing building on to it, or adding space, you know, it's a tiny house village type thing, so you'd probably have to move on, but there are instances around the country where it turns out, after some years, it's, you know, it's not what you intended, and I just would like to take a look at having what we intended be the norm.
So to finish up, then we can open it up to other comments. We do have the blog, we reminded you about that, we'll be putting a post on there tomorrow, I hope, is the plan, about bicycle parking. That's in Module Two, so we're going to introduce some bicycle parking topics. Other items, primarily the things we've seen tonight are on there. Our staff has done a fabulous job of drafting that, they've used their creative side to create some, I think, really fantastic information pieces on these topics. We're still working on Module One and Two, I hope to have those drafted here, or done, finished, and a new revision out within the month, here's hoping, and we'll continue bringing these big-ticket items, what I'm talking about, back to the planning board and to you last night. The planning board heard about our ideas for non-conformities, and we'll be bringing that to you in the next couple of weeks. Other things on the dock are off-street parking, short-term rental, our subdivision regulations, those sort of things, so we'll be bringing those back, and we should be getting here within a month or so also, Module Three, which will be the nuts and bolts, the how-tos to get all this stuff done, and we'll get that out to the communities soon as we review it. And then hopefully, September, August, September, October, fingers crossed, we'll get this done, back to you in a complete form, adopted, and off we go, so. And the final bit there about where you can get more information. So if you have any more questions, me, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I'll sit down and let others ask questions or provide comments.
I think we're probably, we've been at this a while.
Yep.
I think we're ready to hear from the public. They're probably growing impatient. Does anyone from the public wish to speak?
Why do I sign in?
Pardon?
Sign in.
I don't know.
Do I?
We haven't adopted that yet.
Okay, thank you.
But you have to introduce yourself and give your address. Sorry.
I'm Mary Ann Fleming, and I live in an older part of town. I am an officer in the South Manhattan Neighborhood Association.
My address is?
215 South Eighth Street, right behind Commerce Bank.
Thank you, okay.
Okay. And just off, without having to, kind of off the top of my head, I have been with Mr. Butler. You buy a house, you think you've got, you know, kind of a quiet neighborhood, and suddenly it's turned into, you know, three duplexes out of the five in your street. So I like that, I think he's brought up a good point.
Mary Ann, you're going to have to speak up.
I think the biggest...
And maybe move the microphone, can you pull it, there you go, try that.
Let me try that, is that better?
Okay, yes, it is already.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I think the big hassle is enforcement, and it sounds to me as if trying to enforce this would result in having to write a myriad of new regulations. I'm not sure where any supplication is occurring here. I'm concerned with enforcement for the occupancy, we talked about those problems with the main unit, but what about the ADUs? I can see where you rent an ADU to two students, and there is a constant procession of boyfriends, girlfriends, cousins, sisters, brothers, and it suddenly becomes a dwelling place for four people. I'm concerned that there's not adequate parking, and that by the time you put in an extra one parking place in your backyard, everybody else's cars goes on, go on the street. We've already got in our older neighborhoods, very congested streets, I think everybody knows that. So I would say the parking requirement is not adequate. I don't see any meaningful way of enforcing occupancy, either for the owners or for the renters in the ADU, and until I would see that, I think this is a rather damaging proposal to our older neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Does anyone else wish to speak to this?
Good evening, I'm Kathy Chabotowski, I live at 100 South Delaware Avenue. A number of years ago, for some neighborhoods, they were, in older neighborhoods, they were downzoned to R1. East City Park was just downzoned fairly recently, and it seems like the ADU proposal is going backwards, it's changing these neighborhoods back to being R2s. Now, maybe that won't happen all that often, but we see the potential, and I see the potential that, and I know you can't, you can't pre- prevent this from happening, but for abuse, I mean, kind of what we described, that maybe some parents buy a house with the plan to put their student, their K-State student in it, but they never live in it, the parents never live in it, and maybe the student never lives in it either, but nobody ever comes back to check to find out that, you know, it's really not owner-occupied, and so there's the main house that's become a rental, and also the ADU is a rental. So I just see the potential for abuse with this, and it seems like we're going backwards. You know, when these neighborhoods were downzoned to R1, the intention was supposed to be, it was going to stabilize these neighborhoods, it was going to make them more desirable for single families to move into them, and to feel comfortable about investing in those neighborhoods, because there weren't going to be further rentals coming into the neighborhood, and it seems like this proposal is going the opposite direction, and I don't support this idea unless there's a way to really strongly enforce and ensure that they're used as intended. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good evening, my name is Mel Borst, and I live at 1918 Humboldt Street, and I agree with concerns expressed by the commission and speakers about the accessory dwelling units. However, I also see that there could be a useful place for them, perhaps, in, if neighborhoods are willing to accept them that are already zoned, R2, then some of the enforcement questions might be answered, and it may be a way to help boost the desirability of some... And it may be a way to help boost the desirability of some neighborhoods that are threatened with being overtaken completely by rentals, and where single-family or responsible property owners could establish these, and, you know, help with the stability of that neighborhood. The, in reviewing the UDO drafts so far, it is difficult for me to compare the current zoning regulations and zoning districts to what is proposed. And I'm wondering, in this day and age of computers, and the way that things are put together, if the elements of zoning regulations could be separated, so we could compare them, and any changes to them, to what we have currently. The current set of zoning regulations appears to me to be very clear and straightforward. They have, you know, had some tweaks over the years, but not too many. And I think I'd be more comfortable with this UDO if I would have a way to compare what's being proposed to what we already have.
Are you talking about blocks or land, or you?
No, well, zoning regulations, the Manhattan, current Manhattan zoning regulations, if we could compare what's being proposed directly, you know, apples and apples to them. And otherwise, you know, it's kind of, it's a very complex document that's being developed here, at least to me, and comparison is very hard. And that's also the case with the change with the zoning classifications. Chad noted the tool that, where you could scan over the existing zoning and see the new classifications, but I haven't been able to find that and make that work yet. But it brings the question up, why, other than the fact that we have several of these districts in residential and commercial, is that the only reason that we are reclassifying all this? I mean, we're very used to what we have now, and this seems like it's, it's throwing this all up in the air a bit. And maybe after I see that comparison, that would calm me a little bit, but when we are talking about now being, you know, an R1 district now being part of, you know, in with an R2 district, and we're, but we're still keeping the old classifications around, so we know where they are, I'm just wondering why the big need to even change them? Is it because it fits in with the consultants program? Or, and is it, is it better for them than it is for us? These are just some questions that I have about that. Also, on the proposal to increase lot coverage to 35% in the, in, from what is now 30%, in the R1 district, I again think that 30% has been working pretty well. And it's not that hard to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to request permission to get a little more lot coverage for special projects. We recently had a friend that added a carport to his detached garage, and he needed to go before them. It wasn't a big problem for him to do that, it was pretty straightforward. But I fear that if we go up to 35%, then that just pushes us even further with out, with lot coverage. And also, in the current, with the current zoning regulations, pavement is not counted as lot coverage. Even though it's defined as a structure on the ground, and should be included in lot coverage, it is not interpreted that way. And so I would suggest that if we do go to 35%, that all pavement be included that covers the ground on this. And this gets us back to the accessory dwelling units and their parking place in the backyard, I suppose. And how much, how much are we going to be covering up of these yards? And then, it gets back to the comments that have already been made, if you've invested in a neighborhood with the idea of the stability that R1 brings, and my experiences with the neighborhoods in this area, then we're upzoning, again, with this proposal. And I don't think our neighbors know about it yet. And if this is going to be something we seriously consider, I would suggest maybe the neighborhood organizations or associations be in the loop, so they can inform their neighborhoods about what's being proposed here. And I think Mary Ann Fleming brought this up at one of our meetings with the consultant and planners, that I think they're trying very hard to get, you know, the word out about what the proposals are be, are in front of us, but I know a lot of people are not aware. Thank you for your-
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak about the proposal? Okay, does the commission, do you have other comments? Do you feel like you have?
Yeah, I just, with, I'm a little bit torn on the ADUs, because obviously affordable housing is a really big concern of mine, and I can see how this could be used as a tool to help that, but equally as big of a concern of mine is the quality issues that we face for a lot of our different rentals here in Manhattan, whether, you know, standard rentals, or if we would consider ADUs. So, in a large perspective, we, in my opinion, because of city commission actions previously, have limited ourselves in the type of enforcement that we can do, and we do a poor job in enforcing our current rules. So, I, at this point, really don't have an interest in exploring ADUs unless we explore an inspection program on a broader scale. Because I don't understand how we would enforce any of this, and it's ripe for abuse. And so, to me, unless we have that first conversation about inspections as a whole, I don't understand how we can move forward with this. We can't enforce our current regulations and our current, our current ordinances on occupancy, so why add another element of enforcement? And I refuse to only talk about inspections of ADUs, just inspections of ADUs. I would, again, want to treat the whole market the same way. So, tiny homes, I have less concern about, like Commissioner already, I want some more information on how other cities have treated this on a scale, and is it working for them if we set aside a piece of land? Are they, are they finding developers are willing to invest in it to get something like this built? So, on the face value of it, it seems like a proposal that is good, because I know there's been a desire and a want for this. I would just want to know a little bit more about how it's working in other communities.
You bet. To address some of the points made, again, I don't think we're dealing with hundreds, I think we're dealing with 10 of accessory dwelling units. Enforcing 10 ADUs, you know, all of Portland in its first year, I think, had less than 10 in Portland, you know, it's multiples larger than Manhattan. So I don't see the ADU topic being this rampant overrun of our single-family neighborhoods. So I think there is magnitude difference between 10 ADUs versus hundreds, 400 more rental properties. I'm confident if the commission feels that there is a desire by the community, that we could propose multitude of regulations to address your concerns and the community's concerns for parking and Airbnb's and occupancy and how we administer it, it's a matter of what the will is of the commission to proceed forward with ADUs, and then enforce as we move along if it's adopted. The tiny home, we can certainly do some checking, I will say we've had at least one person interested in doing a tiny home village in the city of Manhattan. They have done at least one in the Kansas City metro area with great success, and they've devoted it to a veterans' community. So there are some really good examples in the area, and we'll provide more of that as we move forward, just as a storytelling element for that piece.
Back to your comment on the number of ADUs we'd probably expect, I think it's important for us to remember that we are a unique community in the way, whether Portland, we say the comparison in Portland or not, that 60% of our total rentals, I mean, total housing is rentals, right? So that's unique in a way. And I don't like working based on assumptions. The other thing is, is if we are only talking about 10 or 15 units, well then that doesn't really put a dent in the affordable housing issue at all, does it? So to me, the cons outweigh the pros on this one, if that's the assumption that we choose to work from.
Yeah, I will readily admit, this is not a silver bullet for our affordable housing thing, but it could be a very nice toolbox for a small number of would-be homeowners in, you know, in an area of town. So, it's one of those, we'll take the direction from you of how we should proceed for the community. I, as I said, I know for every concern out there, we can draft or find other communities that have a set of regulations to address that concern, and address it well, just a matter of this is a housing product, or an element that you feel Manhattan is ready for. And if not, that is fine, we can shelve it, we'll halve it later, so if Manhattan ever does become ready for it, we can pull it out.
I think several of us have spoken to enforcement, and I would have to have the assurances that long-term, we would be able to enforce. Well, we are not now, we have, that's what I mean.
Chad, I'm not really for a, I'm lost in my alphabet. ADOs? ADUs?
ADUs.
So, like I said, I was on the fence about it, you can bring forth more information, it seems like something this consultant maybe is all for, but I'm not there yet. And I may not be there also. I think one of the things this will do, one of the reasons we're doing this, is so that it gets much easier for developers and everybody involved, and to streamline it. I'm uncomfortable introducing something new into the fold. I think doing tiny houses, tiny house village is new enough. I don't know if we need to add in another mix of it, because all we're trying to do right now is get everything that we have, and condense that, consolidate them into fewer things to have, instead of adding more onto it. So that's, that's my understanding of why we're doing this in the first place. The second thing is, I'm hoping this reduces the number of issues that go to the boarding of zoning appeals.
Agreed.
And if we put, if we put that organization or that board out, that's great, because we're doing everything right, and nobody ever has to take anything, to appeal anything we're doing. That's what I want to see from this. So that they're going to, they're going to get exceptions, I want that to reduce, become fewer, and I think this, we're on the right track, and I want to make sure we keep continuing on that track. So that's where I stand. I'm glad you're doing, coming to us and discussing it, and I hope the rest of the two other modules that we see are just as productive, but the other stuff, I'm not really for right now.
I see three things in your briefing. The first part, you know, you talked about changing some things, I think that's going to help the non-conformity piece, because, you know, like that example, they're on the lot size, it takes a number of them off of there, and that was a big concern. So I'm looking forward to that, if we can, you know, change that to a lower number, that's great. You know, as I already said, this ADU thing, I don't care for it, because it includes the R1 district. Now, if you change the way you labeled it, as Mel said, and you made it so it couldn't be done in what is currently an R1 district and the rest, then maybe it might be more compatible, but, you know, right now, I'm not real happy with that. The tiny home thing, I think we should pursue, it looks like a good framework for that, and that could help with the affordable housing issue. Right, thanks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to support ADUs. There's two reasons. One, we have a really hard time in this community trying to enforce, I mean, the guys do a great job enforcing what we can, but until the Kansas laws change, we're stuck. So I don't have any hope at all you could accomplish what you said. And then the one that Commissioner Butler mentioned, which is paramount as well, and that is, people in R1 have an expectation that that's a single family, and we don't want to, I mean, I, I just think as some of the public has said, we're be going backwards. Couple other items here. The part I'm interested in, and I, from what you said, I'm not sure we're going to have an ample opportunity, and I want to discuss what is in each one of those zones. Because the problems we have, as was evidenced by our discussion on Miller Ranch some time ago, is the citizens may want a choice on what's in there, that means you have a PUD. And as I understand it, PUDs are not in here. The other thing PUDs do is allow you to have some say over streetscape. And one of the things you said during the briefing is it will reduce the burden on streetscapes, reduce the complexity. So I'm not for that at all. So, I would, I think we need some opportunities for further discussion in the detail. If I've got to read all of that, and then give you emails, each one of us giving you email comment on what we read online, I don't think that's going to work for you. And the other thing, I don't want these guys to get ahead of us.
I can assure you they won't get ahead of us, that we are driving that buzz. To your point of PUDs, we will have a planned development district. I will say, and you've been through a number of public hearings, or seen where PUD was adopted for one reason or another, and then we had to amend, and amend, and amend, and amend, for nothing more than maybe a sign, or at the time the PUD, they didn't know the nine other buildings they were going to build, so we had to do an amendment for every one. The streamlining, I know will come through eliminating that PUD process, and standardizing it, so you will know what uses, how it'll develop, et cetera, et cetera. It also, in Module Two, we'll present this in a later work session, does have landscape standards. So we're not, we're actually bringing that bar way up, our current zoning regulations have very minimal landscape standards. We're bringing that bar way up, especially for commercial and multifamily, to what is being built today without our requirements. So we'll be providing that. And so the idea is, PUDs are labor-intensive for the developer, and the consultant, and the staff, and we feel that we can eliminate a lot of that need by writing what we want in the regulations, instead of going through some song and dance where we end up there anyhow. But we will still have a PUD, a similar PUD process, we'll call it a floating zone. So if there is a unique development type that we don't envision today, someone wants to do, we would have that availability. So, but to your point, we'll, we'll find a way to synthesize it and bring back comparison. The reality is not a whole lot's changing in terms of district requirements, of what's allowed, lot area setbacks, those kind of things, but I can certainly appreciate the trust of the Verifi aspect, and so we'll find a way to streamline it, so you can compare and-
Well, my point is that if we do nothing more than change the name on the zone, which you basically just said, then it doesn't solve my issue with being able to exercise some developmental control by the use of a PUD. And I'm not necessarily interested in the work it takes to change things after the fact. What I am interested is in getting it just about right in the first place.
And that, that will be the point of, especially in the commercial realm, you know, we don't have a whole lot when it comes to residential, in terms of, but the commercial side, we'll have a lot of those design standards that will control it with regulations instead of doing-
If our intent, and it should be, is to orient some commercial activities in our neighborhoods or near our neighborhoods, we have to have a mechanism to do that.
Yes.
And most of that can be satisfied, in my view, through a PUD, and I haven't seen any place on here that does that. So that's, that would be my interest in the next presentation.
Okay, we can certainly bring that, we'll get that before we get too far ahead, we'll present that to you, of how that'll all work out. I think it'll, it'll most definitely satisfy your needs. Thank you for the comments.
The other point would be that we may be- The other point would be that we may be trading staff time at one end for staff time at the enforcement side. And if we're having to check on people and make sure that there's an owner and make sure occupied, and it, I could see more enforcement issues and time than at the front end in the, at the planning level. So, I mean, I want to keep staffing in mind also.
Agreed. Okay, thank you very much, I've taken plenty of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's an interest here in taking a seven-minute break, so.
Good for you.
Huh?
Good for you.[642.16]
Through a few facets of the TIF statute. We've established some tax increment financing districts in the city before. We basically did so to capture increased valuation. We use that growth in taxes to pay off TIF eligible costs. Just some in reference, land acquisition, demolition, site prep. Those types of public improvements, facilities that you've seen within our TIF districts before. And the history, Manhattan Town Center was established in the early 80s. Early in my career, we were able to sit in this room and actually watch a TIF expire and watch all that valuation come back online. And the city and the county and the school district realized quite a gain from the Manhattan Town Center. We reestablished, we established another district, two other districts, district areas in the north and the south area of, north and south of the Manhattan Town Center in '05. This is an area where the community has obviously made significant investments to protect previous investments. It's been a continual, an area that the community has prioritized and it keeps that commercial retail near the community's core. So how do you create a tax increment finance district? By statute, there are eligible areas within communities. You can have an area that's blighted. There's a definition in the statute. A conservation area, again, another defined area within the statute. They've added some recently within the statute for these major tourism and entertainment areas. We've seen TIF slash star bonds pop up throughout the state under that definition. Intermodal transportation areas, bioscience development areas, and then vacant and condemned areas over 65 years of age. The one that we have used in Manhattan, at least for the north and the south area, was an enterprise zone. And this is an area that had to be established prior to 1992. And it was there to promote that general economic and welfare of the city, the economic growth and economic welfare. This is the city of Manhattan's enterprise zone. There was a process by which the city commission, again, prior to '92, established this area. Obviously, at the time, that upper right-hand corner was very much a part of our industrial park area, which has morphed over time to a lot of retail and restaurants and different type of commercial products. Still some industrial present there, but then you can see more in the core, which would be more in line with our original ward districts, one through seven, as an area that obviously the community identified to preserve and grow that economic general welfare of the area. So those are areas that we can move forward under the statute and actually establish these types of districts. This is Aggieville. It's primarily comprised of C3. You do have some RM on the south end bordered by residential. A few PUDs on the north side of Blument, but that cutoff in that previous map, if you'll notice, is Blument. So we won't be able to go north of Blument under that definition of enterprise zone. So it'll limit us basically to Blument on the north. But it will allow us to look at the rest of the C3. And we could even go a little bit to the east if we desire. Obviously, south, you get past Fremont and you're in the park. It's probably not likely we would capture revenue in the park, but we could talk about going east a little bit.
This is, the dark color is just the Aggieville, current Aggieville area?
The C3.
This is, uh, C3, all of it?
Yep. The red is C3. There's obviously some RM and R mixed in there, but from a commercial district that we commonly refer to as Aggieville, C3 is it. So there's quite a process, again, generated through Kansas State annotated the statutes, Kansas statutes annotated. So there's a TIF boundary that we would have to establish, and that kind of goes back to that map. We'd have to get comfortable with what it is we want to establish, where the district boundaries are. We step forward, basically a public hearing, and that is the hearing by which you start adopting an ordinance to establish a district. Resolution is passed initially, setting that date, and then you gotta wait at least 30, but no more than 70, before you have that hearing. The boundary is a general description of that, plus the plan in which you would obviously hope to see redevelopment and reinvestment, not only publicly but privately. We would conduct that hearing and consider first reading of an ordinance. Once we consider that first reading, it's a little bit confusing in the statute because the state of Kansas doesn't require two readings of ordinances. But we, traditionally, consider two. So we have a little bit of an opening. We can consider first reading, and then we can go ask the school district and Riley County to weigh in on this. They essentially have 30 days after the time we pass first reading to get back to us. They can take no action, and no action in 30 days is essentially, you know, they're going to allow it. But they can take action to essentially veto or stop this process if they find it has an adverse impact or effect on their establishment. So they have this 30-day window, and traditionally, Ron and I and legal have attended some of their meetings. We've given them a presentation. We've talked to them about the district. We've talked to them about the impacts. We have, you know, feasibility studies, and we forecast where the revenues may generate over the 20-year period, and we look at the impact, not only on the city, but the school district and the county. And we show them the potential growth, and we show them with or without the TIF, what we would anticipate by way of property tax revenues from that area.
If they veto, is it done?
It is to the point that they would participate. So when we establish it initially, it'll probably more likely include everybody.
Got it.
And if they balk at that, and they don't give us a whole lot of good reason, maybe we interpret that as they'll never participate. There may be conditions. In 2000, in 2001, we had two different TIF districts that were vetoed. We got some feedback from the county and the district. One each vetoed those proposals prior to establishing our districts downtown in '05. Some of the reasons were, you know, just the way we had it structured, some of the risk that the developer was willing or not willing to take, and they were looking for a more comprehensive effort. So we backed up, started over, and took two or three years really to study and create master plans with more detail and more information and a plan that started to fit the expectation of the community. Sometimes you get that feedback that, you know, this wouldn't be a bad idea if, or how about this portion? There's ways to negotiate participation in that as well. Clearly, there are mill levies associated with property taxes. There are certain sections of the mill levy, and we'll get to that a little bit later, but there are 20 mills in the general fund of the school district we can't touch with TIF. It stays put. So they have to evaluate that too, that impact, and then they let us know what they're thinking. Yep.
Just now, um, we were having an earlier discussion with Ron today. So can you just, for public information, and since this is an education process for us as far as to go back to a few times when you said where either the school district or the county vetoed it? So can you talk about those just a little bit more in detail about why?
Sure.
They vetoed it? And did we go ahead and do a second reading, or did we take into consideration their veto and said, oh, let's make a change in this?
Yeah, and Ron will have to jump in here because he was much more a part of it when we were, we attempted those and didn't get them. But with our structure of two readings, I believe we considered first reading, went to the entities, and then one case, my memory just serves me, it was a lot about risk. At the time, the developer wanted the city to go buy the property and the city to hold the property, condemn it basically, not do any negotiations, but just come in, condemn it, and then turn it right back over to the developer. And that just, that was a hard sell in the public. And the commissioners, obviously, at the time, probably had some, you know, they knew that pressure was there. They knew there was a desire. But school district and county, they started getting feedback from the community. Once those veto actions took place, the commission could just simply either not take second reading and not officially create anything. The statute actually talks about actually undoing what you did. But in our case, without a second reading, we wouldn't necessarily have to undo it. But a lot of the feedback I recall was about taking risk, and Ron, I don't know if you had any more than that?
Yeah, I think the, probably the biggest lessons learned from that episode was that everybody was reacting to a proposal without a lot of input. So we didn't take a lot of time to really nurture those specific developments. They were heavy with big box footprints and big parking lots. And so, you know, that's kind of one of the things where this kind of process that you'll learn through here is, it's focused on setting the boundary first and then building the details later. So the lesson we learned with the current redevelopment we inherited was we then stepped back away from it because we had some of that input for feedback on what really wasn't appreciated. And then, so we really spent time in developing locally. The chamber got involved, Brent Moeman's office got involved, did a lot of focus groups and, you know, okay, what would you like to see? And so then we went out. And that made a big difference.
I just wanted to make clear that there's lots of stakeholders that go into this process. It's not just a city thing, county, USD 383, or anybody else.
It was clear too, there was going to be a large assembly of land with a downtown TIF, north and south.
There were a lot of landowners impacted by the proposal that weren't very appreciative either.
We had 42 landowners. We were, with a plan implemented, we would have ended up acquiring on the north end alone. And on the south, we had 26. And all the plans talked about taking their property for a different use. Aggieville's a little bit different. What we've talked about is really revitalizing and taking the opportunities of the property the city already owns. And we're not talking about buying all 100 businesses in Aggieville and clearing the slate and coming back in with something new. In fact, that's the opposite. I mean, we want to keep that culture. We want to keep that look and feel from a lot of the businesses that generate down there, the attractiveness, but bring in the uses that can obviously change the use of the district, more of a corporate presence, more of a high, you know, there's just a lot of different user groups that want to come into that area right now. And if we can facilitate that through public improvements, garages, and participation that way, it gives us that opportunity. So once established, if they take no action, we can proceed with second reading. And once established, then that base valuation is set, and that incremental revenues then start to be generated. Once the boundary is established, then officially, we have to come back with a redevelopment plan. For downtown north and south, we did some of this simultaneously because we were far enough along and had all the detail necessary for the plan. So we established our district boundary and adopted the north end plan at the same time. We waited several years to adopt the south end plan, but once we adopt that plan, which includes the feasibility study, the map of the area, proposed development, relocation plan if you're acquiring property, and any other information advisable to the public, once you have all that, you bring it forward to your planning board, and they make sure it's consistent with the comp plan and they're in concurrence with it. And then it goes back to the commission. And that takes a super majority. It's two-thirds vote, but with five of you, at 66%, it gets us to four out of five of you. Three out of five, we'd fall short of adopting that plan. But that adoption starts the 20-year clock. So you can establish a boundary, and you can establish the base and start accumulating revenue, but the 20-year clock starts when you adopt the plan. We were fortunate on the north end. Best Buy opened in October of 2006. We actually adopted the plan. We adopted it once in '05 and had to reestablish it in '06 because we had some legal issues with the way we did things. But when we reestablished it in '06, we were literally months away from the first store
These are usually 20 years?
TIF districts have a life after a plan is adopted of 20 years.
Correct.
It can go 21 or 22 if you wait that long to adopt a plan, but typically, communities adopt them fairly quickly after their boundary. So a tentative timeline, when we were talking about getting more detail, phase two will start to get more information, back to you all, the community, about what it is our public areas will look like, our streets, our sidewalks, our parking lots, our parks, how traffic will flow, how we're going to manage that parking, if we're going to bring in parking garages, where are they? Are they wrapped with any type of private office, retail, residential? And then any type of private development that we can facilitate otherwise. All those things would be part of that discussion. Hotel rezoning, we would anticipate that would be on the planning board's agenda either late August or late July, early August. We anticipate that being submitted, I think, the first week of May. So typically, 45 days after that, the planning board will get a hold of it. And then we would more than likely start our TIF boundary establishment this fall and winter and try to work through that process we just outlined. And for a plan then to be adopted sometime by summer of '19.
So the boundary establishment, is that when the value of the district is set?
Correct.
Okay, so that is, we would assume, before the hotel would be built?
Yeah, that's really the timing we got to be very careful with. Clearly, if they are successful in getting through zoning and they get to a point where they're constructing, Riley County typically goes out January 1st with valuations. So they'll go throughout the community and establish those. They'll give that property a value as of January 1. That would be ideal to have that about that time, obviously before they're done with construction, so we could have that valuation increase as part of the increment. We mentioned before, Aggieville has that value of around $60 million. I think we actually had it higher than that. Since we can't go north of Blument and capture the hotel and the other pieces, I brought it back down a little bit. And I just go through the mill levies, just so you under, you know, just get a feel for this. We have a total of 145 mills in the community right now between all four of the taxing jurisdictions, including the state of Kansas. So in order to figure those taxes, this appraised value of an area has to be converted to an assessed value. For a commercial property, that's basically taking it times 25% or .25. So if you're, if all $60 million in Aggieville, I know it's not, but if all of it was commercial property, it would have a $15 million assessed value. Then you take that value times your mill levy at a 1/1,000th of a value to get your total property taxes that that area would generate. So Aggieville, as you know it, $60 million roughly in appraised value, $15 million in assessed value generates a little over 2.17 million in property taxes.
Is that one year, 20 years?
That's one year.
One year.
Yeah. So the next slide, well, it's a couple more. This is a breakdown of that 2.175 and where it goes, based on your mill levies. So I'll come back to that, but there is a breakdown. So this, this is a document we put in your packet, and I've got a PDF here so we can blow it up a little bit so you can get the feel for it. But how TIF works, that original value that we were talking about, establishing that base, that value that's basically frozen once we pass that boundary, it talks about investment. So when a TIF is created, you typically see private investment and public investment come in. And we obviously have talked about public investment by way of streetscape, parking garages. We've talked about private investment by way of those other uses, commercial, office, residential. Well, as those transpire, those parcels grow in terms of what they're worth. And as that growth is captured on an annual basis, it creates an increment, which is the difference between the original value and the new value. And then taxes are paid on that, and we are able to capture those taxes over time. So as that value increases, revenue in the fund increases, and it grows to a point where clearly it can be set aside for pay-as-you-go projects, or we can support bond issues to build that public infrastructure with those revenues. Another way of looking at it, a basic X and Y axis, time across the bottom, appraised value up and down. You're hoping as time goes, your appraised value is going the same way. So you get the trend line up on your graph there, and you're able to capture that area in yellow, which is the increment over time above the base. Once the TIF is done, you've paid off your bonds and you've paid off all your expenses, the community realizes a much larger value for the area in which both public and private have invested in. And that's why I said in '04, '05, when the TIF went off for the mall, it was almost $1 million in revenue that went to all three taxing jurisdictions, an increase of $1 million that was spread out over those three taxing jurisdictions just because of the valuation of the mall itself. This is a breakdown of that 2.175 million, which again, is just an example of what Aggieville does for the taxing jurisdictions today. I mentioned the 20 mills coming off the school district. That's automatic by the state of Kansas. I say or lower because their capital outlay that's supported by mills is also not eligible for TIF. And I talked to Eric Reed, Assistant Superintendent, and Lou Faust, their Finance Director, and right now, they have about eight and a half mills going towards capital outlay. So we would lose the one and a half, the eight and a half, and the 20. So our 145 mills would drop really to 115 that would be eligible for taxing increment financing, which is normal. We went through the same thing downtown. Again, just trying to reiterate in text here how a TIF would work. Establish that base. You've got 20 years to capture that growth. As levies increase, stay the same or decrease, that base valuation basically stays the same. And as levies go up, the amount going back to the taxing jurisdictions would go up too. Again, we capture that growth, offset debt service payments for infrastructure, land acquisition, all the infrastructure we've talked about, streetscape, lighting, according to that adopted plan. So I just wanted to provide you a little bit of an example. In '05, when we established the TIF, our downtown appraised at $16 million. It had an assessed value of 3.4 million. The 102 mills at the time established $353,000 of taxes. That was basically frozen. That 3.4 million in assessed valuation is basically frozen. That was the value at 102 mills at the time. Today, the same area is worth $87 million. We've seen an increase of $71 million in appraised buildings, assets, investments. That assesses at 16.4 million. We're generating over $2 million in property taxes from that area. We have to determine the increment. So we go back to the 2 million. The 353 grows to 398 because our levies have gone up. They get that number instead of 353, and that's steadily grown over time. I mean, obviously, you can see we've grown 15 mills as a community eligible under this example in 12 years. But the increment, and you'll see a number very close to that in your budget book, that we realized in 2017 for TIF. And that money goes to a security bank in Kansas City, and it pays off our TIF bonds. Again, just wanted to give you an education this evening, answer questions, look for any type of feedback as we move forward. Nothing real specific, you know, the timeline, just put it back up there, kind of what we were, what we're thinking for the next, you know, year to move through this process.
Perfect that you went to this slide because that's the one I had a question about. On, okay, so to make sure I'm understanding the timeline, so when we establish the boundary, that would be what we would consider that first reading? So the second reading of the ordinance would happen before the redevelopment plan, correct?
Yeah.
That's what that ordinance is referring to?
Correct. It would essentially happen, that 30-day period. We'd wait a month and let the county and the school district chew on this and see if they are okay. If they're not okay, then they veto, then it kind of comes back at a, we either got to change our approach here, or they're fine with it.
So I guess my question is, why, why do we plan after it's passed? Wasn't the problem with the first one that maybe our planning wasn't as clear as it should be? Why aren't those two items flipped?
The, you do a lot of planning, and you don't establish a TIF district without a lot of information. I'll just put that out there. Redevelopment plan is a, it's a legal term within the statute, and it basically lays out the things that you're going to accomplish and spend your revenues on. So right now, we've already studied the heck out of parking garages in Aggieville. A parking garage is going to be a big part of that redevelopment plan, or we're going to try to really get it honed down to a site. We're going to get it honed down to the number of stalls and really have some preliminary budget estimates as to how much that's going to cost.
And do we also have to include how we're going to finance it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense.
And if we're going to have a relationship with a developer, we got to talk about that in the plan. We got to talk about how, you know, our incentives, if we're going to provide any for land acquisition, if they want to go out and do some things. If there's a public improvement there that's significant, like the garage or streetscape, we got to outline it here. You can amend development plans. You can, you know, if something comes up, you want to redirect some money, and you want to invest in something along the way, you can amend these things. Still takes super majority to do so.
Thank you for the work that you put into this because what's really important here for the public to understand is that this isn't a tax increase.
Right.
Or rather, redistribution of funds to be invested in the district. So I think it was well explained, and it's good just on a broader note for the public to understand.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think the outline and everything is, you know, well done, and I understand what the TIF district does. The main purpose of this, as you said, is for the garage. So if the garage, if we're thinking about, from previous sessions, about $12 million, I believe is what they said for the garage. I still think we need to figure out, well, let me take a few steps back. If the garage is about $12 million and you're saying we should anticipate about $2 million per year on this, so in 20 years, we would get 40 million? No?
And I just, the example I gave you is just, it was downtown. So that's where we're at downtown today.
So let's say 1 million, okay?
Yeah.
If we decrease it.
I think we talked about a, you know, anywhere from 15 to 20 million total.
Right.
Would be the potential for Aggieville.
Right.
We clearly need to get a feasibility study done, and we also need to talk about just how aggressively we're going to be towards private development in our strategy.
Right. So this is for the development itself. The point I'm trying to come to is, if you have a parking garage, one of the things we talked about is fees and parking permits.
Yeah.
And how do you do that? And do we still need to do that? I understand if students want to park in the garage, that's not what we're looking for. Are we looking at parking permits? What I don't want to do is disincentivize people to shop in Aggieville because now they have to pay for parking fees.
Yeah. So the parking management is part of that phase two that we haven't asked Olson and their team to put together. So Walker will be part of that, Olson will be part of that, and obviously, the steering committee and the commission, we're going to have to vet that. We're going to have to talk about scenarios to manage parking in Aggieville.
Do we need to though? I mean, can we have it really low if we're looking at?
Sure.
Making a certain amount from the TIF? TIF district itself to pay for it? Like I've mentioned in the past, most areas where they have something like Aggieville or shopping districts, the garage is free for parking, so you can go and spend your money. So do we, does it need to be aggressively done or anything?
Those are the scenarios we'll lay out, and we'll go with a zero-cost scenario. I think our experience in both downtown and Aggieville, where we have a lot of public parking, we have a lot of concern about turnover. And you go on campus and park and get a ticket, it's $50. You come in Aggieville and you get a ticket and it's 15. And a lot of people are choosing to do that, or they choose to park in the park, or they choose to park on 14th Street and walk in. We have to look at all scenarios. Clearly, there's going to be different political ideologies on how to approach this, but there's also ways we can structure parking, timelines, days of the week, times of the day. I mean, right now, we're 8 to 5 Monday through Friday. There's no evenings and no weekend restrictions at all. So again, we need to talk through those scenarios. How aggressive do we want to be? At what times do we want to be aggressive? There's a lot of different scenarios we need to vet.
I just, sorry to interrupt. I'm fine with the plan. I understand it. I understand why we're doing it. I'm mostly concerned about the garage component of it. I do want that area to do very well, and I want people to come and enjoy Aggieville and spend their money, but I don't want the garage to stop them when the reason we're putting it in is so that we can get more people there.
Right.
So I want us to look at that very open-minded. I'm not for punitive measures at all. And being Manhattan, we want people to come and enjoy Aggieville.
And Mass Street, you know, Eddie and I took a trip over to Mass Street in Lawrence, and we researched. Diane Stoddard works over there. She obviously used to work here, had a really good session. It's been a couple of years since we've been over. They have multiple garages on the backside of Mass. They also charge on Mass. They also charge to park in those garages. Power and Light. Other districts that you see lots of people coming in for a variety of reasons. But they can, you can structure those things at different times. You can, if you want turnover during the day, there's just different ways to approach it. We want to give you all that information. We'll clearly be looking to you all to set that kind of policy.
Okay. I think that's going to be a bigger discussion. I think the TIF district itself is necessary for growth and development. I think it's high time we did it.
I appreciate the presentation. I think it was very thorough, and I think we know what to expect. And it seems like one of the, lately we've been calling it "tools" that we could finance, but we need to as infrastructure in Aggieville. I'm really interested in what else besides the parking garage and the streetscape that you would, you think is going to come forward?
We know we have some waterline infrastructure we need to address. There's probably some stormwater and sewer. We need to make sure we're adequate. Olson's done some preliminary analysis for us there. You know, lighting, alleyways, our Triangle Park. A big topic in my, from what I'm hearing already, it's traffic flow and on-street parking and pedestrian areas versus areas for cars. It's going to be a huge discussion in the next few months, and we're going to have to get our arms around how we want it to look and feel from a vehicle standpoint and a pedestrian one. There's some really cool public areas that are open-air or enclosed. Some of you may have been to them in Power and Light. There's some up in the Haymarket area in Lincoln. And these generate venues that hundreds and thousands of people gather and take advantage of entertainment, whether it be a sport or a movie or something that they can gather. I've seen conferences take place at the open-air pavilion in Power and Light. They just clear out the entire area and they give it to a group and they host events in there. So there are a lot of options, and we need to explore some of those concepts and bring those back to you all and see what's favorable.
Okay, to be determined.
Yep.
I think the other important area will be how much private development, new private development, such as the mixed-use attaching to the parking garage, what is that arrangement? The central parking area that we own, is that something we're going to put up for sale for redevelopment? And if so, what does that, what do we want that to look like? That's all stuff we need to do, but it all could have significant impacts on the overall revenue stream and the plan and the feasibility study, depending on where does it fit in the timeline for development, so.
Every dollar we can leverage privately will give you more opportunities publicly in that district to build infrastructure. So whatever incentives we talk about for the rest of the evening, a lot of communities have targeted areas like this to open up the incentives to encourage private development so they can take advantage of the growth.
The only comment I have is probably unsolvable in the short term, but all of these things we are going to talk about, TIF and IRBs and tax relief, all of those things, EcoDivo, all fit under a similar umbrella. And I didn't know kind of what else you wanted, but you know, as I read through Lenexa, Olathe, Wichita, Hutch, all those various things, there are some very attractive things in each one of those. One, I think Lenexa had a list in there, and all of them, even in IRBs, took a positive approach. That is, we want to encourage economic development. We want our existing businesses to grow. We want to encourage businesses that bring revenue from outside, those kind of statements. And I think that's very important for, let's just call it an umbrella approach to all these different tools. And like I say, this is a long-term thing because there's a lot of, each one of these is pages long and a lot of thoughts already gone into them, but I think there's some advantage over the long term of writing and encompassing economic policy that has all of these pieces in it. So, you know, particularly, we've kind of got hoists on our own batard on the IRBs with the simple statement that, about competition. So we've got to sort all that out so we don't have these kind of bumps in the road anymore.
Just recently looking at Lawrence's approach, Trent Armbrue sent it to me this evening. He knew we were looking into it. They have one form that literally has all six incentives available for you to check and all the information, and it's a similar rhetoric throughout the entire document of these areas, these thresholds by way of investment, these fees, this is how we're going to, this is how, and this is our priority.
And I interpreted that as a, kind of a, an approach when the developer came in, they would sit down with you, Kyle, Ron, whoever, and you would say, look, as you're going through this, think about these things, rather than having to do independent research and then coming in and ask, how does this work?
Yeah. And it speaks to, you know, our history. Lawrence also did a survey, and they actually tracked how often the city of Manhattan had used these tools. And we are not approached and we're not hit up that often as all those metro cities are. We know that. So we have a, we have a history, but as they pointed out, we've only done one abatement, and that's within the last four years. And we've only done two TIF districts, you know, in our history. And we only, and they documented all these things, whereas those metro areas, I mean, you'll hear tonight later, I mean, there's 44 CIDs in Kansas City. We haven't even done one. We've been so concentrating on public improvements, leveraging TDDs, that we really haven't put money back to the developer. And we've been, you know, successful in doing so. But I think everybody's recognizing the package can be there and it can attract much more so than just being reactionary.
I do appreciate your comment about umbrella because I think from our standpoint in doing this exercise, getting ready for this meeting, it was pretty clear to us that it's an overarching umbrella for economic development. And having all of these tools available in that chest and even, you know, reiterating on the TIF with the, what the Star Bonds brought were the bioscience districts. You know, we've got a bioscience district. It's a good one, you know? And if we're not, if we're not successful in convincing the use of our existing Star Bond, then maybe we go for a bioscience Star Bond or maybe not a Star Bond. So that was one of the things that our NBAF Task Force Group that I'm a member of is, you don't see a lot of, there was, one of the mistakes made in that legislation was is you don't see a lot of generally sales tax producers in a bioscience district. It's just you don't have that compatible next to the research, that sale. So redoing that with a legislation that opens that up, maybe to capture some of the income tax or some of those kind of things would be much more appropriate because those are the kind of jobs you're creating in that district.
Yeah, I'm all for just proceeding with the process, and we'll worry about the planning details later once it gets approved.
Thank you, Jason. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on the discussion this evening about TIF Seeing none, we'll move along to the next, here we go. So the next discussion item is about industrial revenue bonds, IRB policies, and Jason Hilders, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So our current policy was adopted in '03. I think we became fairly familiar with this during the hotel discussion at 12th and Blue. But it makes some overarching goal statements about promoting and stimulating the economic development of the community. Eligibility, again, we reference that competition, one firm over another within the local market structure. We did reference, and some of the other policies we read into, talked about commercial and retail receiving some additional scrutiny. And then we set aside low to moderate income housing as an eligible use with our policy in '03. As with most, we're looking at quality job creation, capital investment, diversification of that local economy, and then identifying a need of the community as those IRB applicants come forward. We charged $1,000 for our fee. It's been that for, obviously, several years. And then we, and again, just that waiver of policy and procedures, the Commission has that kind of discretion. Our policies aren't very long, but we do have other policies that play into IRBs, and this tax abatement policy was adopted basically at the same time. And again, it has very similar goals, looking for that employment. But it does, on the criteria, set them through our ROI, our return on investment model. So we identify the costs and the benefits, clearly looking for job creation, again, capital investment, which obviously both help that model quite a bit. The higher the wages, the more they're investing in a project, it's going to raise the benefit in that analysis. Again, $1,000 fee on an abatement. The ROI model and the policy, which I did attach, updated in 2013. It talks about a 10-year cost-benefit analysis. We always provide 20. We can narrow it to 10 and give you that data, and we typically do. But our forecast for most relationships looks at that 20-year mark. We hold a hearing. We do provide notices. USD and the county are obviously impacted by tax abatements, probably more so to a degree than even TIF. But they're provided notices and then they can provide you all comments at those hearings. And then we consider an ordinance. Annual reporting for our tax abatement policy and IRBs are both with that economic development annual report. And again, you can, you all can waive any portion of the policy that meets the interests of the city as long as we stay in accordance with the state law. So the other IRB policies that we included, and Commissioner Dotson, I think he did a good job just kind of catching what we were after too. We highlighted some areas in terms of just, there are cities that clearly call out areas of their community. Comp plans, so when you look at Manhattan, we've got adopted plans for Aggieville and downtown in our comp plan. Those would make sense for our incentive tools to be used in those areas, and other cities have clearly done that as well. Downtown, if they're not, if they don't have this part of their comp plan, they clearly are looking to reinvest in those areas and revitalize them, keep them vibrant. Research areas, industrial parks, expansion areas, targeted areas of your community. Again, most communities are setting these things up, letting developers and investors know if you come into this area, these types of incentives are available. The cost-benefit analysis, pretty consistent across the board. I think our model is a good one. We're constantly putting it up and looking at it from a comparative standpoint, and we come out pretty well. Most of the applicants we work with are pretty pleased with how our model works. Again, I just mentioned the chamber went back through it in 2012 after establishing it in early 2000s. There was a committee put together. They had some recommendations. We made some adjustments, but it continues to function appropriately. So there's a lot of fees that other communities charge. We obviously have an application fee that's somewhat in line with other communities, but they get paid on the issuance of bonds. They get paid when that abatement takes place. They get annual reporting fees. So there's a structure there that clearly the community in these communities, in these other communities are realizing by way of the use of these tools. It's something to think about. We've been fairly non-aggressive with this over the years, but then again, we haven't dealt with the numbers that they deal with, and it can occupy a lot of staff time. Sales tax exemptions, typically IRBs, you know, 15 years ago or even prior to that, rates at which you could just go borrow money have varied over time. Industrial revenue bonds have set a pretty competitive rate, a pretty low rate, and a lot of times, these companies would access IRBs and take advantage of that rate. Anymore, people are taking advantage of the sales tax exemption. That's primarily the reason they're coming in for a lot of them. The financing is more flexible. I won't argue that. We have debt instruments out there on some of our applicants that have been there multiple years, you know, 15 years, 20 years, some even get into 30 years of financing with these tools. And they are very flexible, and you can pay a lot early just in, you know, very small interest payments and then work towards a balloon payments towards the end. So they're very flexible and valuable, and that may be the reason some of the companies that have approached us use IRBs, but this sales tax exemption, it's impactful. And if you qualify, more reason than not, that's why they're here. A lot of large investments, and you see it in other communities, they set thresholds for this, and it's really thresholds for the entire tool. Very few of them separated out sales tax exemptions as if we're going to treat this differently and look at it differently. If you qualified for IRBs, it was part of the deal. And most of them just defined it as what it is and it was part of it, and didn't give any separate criteria as to if you're just coming in for sales tax exemptions, this is how we're going to treat you. It was basically if you're coming in for IRBs, this is how we're going to treat you. It's a matter of how much you're going to invest and how much you're going to leverage from the city. And that's what we were, the last bullet point there, private investment thresholds for both IRBs and abatements. We had a lot of discussion about the sales tax exemption. You know, we're looking for some direction. We can go comprehensive on a policy that includes other tools, other communities have. We really jam three policies separately. A lot of them bring them together, and we could approach it that way. Minimum thresholds on investment might be a good idea, something to think about. We can give you data on what we've done. Genesis just being one of the more recent, $8 million investment in most communities, it would have qualified for what we did. But some of them have minimums of $500,000, some of them have minimums of $3 million. And we just have to kind of look and see what we've done and where your comfort level is. Pilots, payment in lieu of taxes, they are part of most policies. You can negotiate. You can negotiate those upfront, so instead of, you know, 100% of the sales tax exemption, you get a portion of that. You can also talk about the percentage on the exemption side. We haven't done very many abatements, but when we have, we've gone aggressive with them. And they're 10 years, for the most part, they're 100%. There's a lot of different rate structures you can put out there. Some communities you saw, they only went to 55 and they capped it. They wouldn't let them go any higher than that and that was based on an investment. So you can set thresholds throughout your policy that are very guiding to any type of applicant, just based on the comfort level of the governing body. And then the competition, you don't see it a whole lot, what you do see is specific areas and specific types of businesses that they'll incentivize. And they get pretty specific. The state law obviously allows a broad range and there are communities that have picked out certain characteristics and put them in their policies and basically said, we're not going to incentivize these others. So it's a quick overview. Again, our policies are fairly short. If we want to go something comprehensive and look at other incentives and tie everything together, most communities are heading in that direction. With the caveat, we don't do this a whole lot, but it may be, it may be time to put those types of things together. I say we don't do it a whole lot, we don't have a lot of pressure and a lot of the conversations that we have are about our past experience and that's the feedback we give most companies. Happy to address any questions?
With Civic Plus, they did a tax abatement, right?
Yep.
So in their current policy, it says, "Provide an incentive to new or existing businesses manufacturing, conducting research and development, or storing goods or commodities which are sold or traded which result in additional employment." How does Civic Plus fall under that definition?
There is a statement at the end that talks about waiving any and all policies and procedures.
This is the general problem that I have with our economic, to me, it's whatever way we go, whether it's we get really specific and narrow it down, then I don't want to, I don't feel appropriate with the commission then picking winners or losers because we don't know how many people read the policy and said, you know, I'm just not even going to spend the $1,000 application fee because my business doesn't apply to that, knowing that if they lobby really well, the commission could overturn their own policy.
The only thing I would add to that, Commissioner, is our annual report, it's very accessible and you can see who's leveraged what tools. In the case of an abatement, Civics Plus, most recent, prior to that, Offlornce, multimillion-dollar building, GTM, multimillion-dollar building, Manko, multimillion-dollar, I mean, you can see the millions of dollars these companies invested in our community to leverage the tools that we made available. And a policy would help, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just, the history is there and when they sit down with administration, we go through that history.
Which I agree with and I mean, we're, I mean, the big things that we're trying to capture are those multimillion-dollar companies and buildings.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, inherently, and this is like a larger political question that's happening, in my opinion, on a national level, I still think there's an issue that a lot of people feel like those incentives are only going to the big companies and it's probably because they feel more confident on the lobbying side. So again, I don't want a mom and pop store to read something like this and then maybe, I'm just, I want to make the point that language, no matter what way we go, is incredibly important. If we want to be specific, let's be specific, but I don't want to see the city commission haphazardly overturning each other, our own policies. One other question that I had, okay, actually, never, never mind, I might, I kind of lost my train of thought, so I'll turn back to it, but yeah, I just, whatever we do, I just want to make sure that we're okay with the language. I, the competition part of it, actually think that we should eliminate that general clause, but I mean, that was my entire issue with the initial IRB. If that clause wasn't in there, again, it's, to me, it's about a sense of fairness and about being transparent and straightforward about how we're going to issue these. And I also do really like the idea of making it more straightforward, all the tax incentives that we offer to somebody, because right now they're parceled out in documents and policies that are elsewhere. And when we did look at some of the other city ones, it was a little bit more straightforward. So I do really like the idea of condensing it and making it more apparent of what we could do to bring a business or expand an existing business here, so.
I just wanted to point out that Civics Plus was only a partial abatement. It was for the stuff above ground, the ground floor, because I had a lot to do with that because I didn't like that. Personally, I think we've got a lot of flexibility on this and we should keep it because it's economic development tool, leave the flexibility in there so we can look at each one, like Civics Plus was, you know, looking at each one, you look at the policy, it didn't make sense to give an abatement for the entire building, but it did make sense of an incentive to say, okay, we'll abate everything above the ground floor, so we kept, you know, a base level of taxes. We didn't go backwards on that and that's why the decision was made that way. And then the current policy allows that kind of flexibility, so you can look at each one and tweak it to where it makes sense.
I just want to be clear that I've never been against IRBs. I think because we had such a long discussion about the garage that the Marriott proposed, I think that was the only time we had a lengthy discussion about IRBs. Since the time I've been on the city commission, we did GTM, I think Civic Plus, Metal Arc, Genesis, we've never had a lengthy discussion. That was an anomaly mainly because it was for the garage, not the hotel itself, and there was some, the way the process was done, some felt like they were left out. So that deserved a lengthy discussion. I think as far as the bullets you proposed, I'm confident with the way it is right now. I don't think, I don't think we need to make that many changes to it. For bullet number two, I think having them coincide, whatever that might look like, as long as they're all in one spot, and it does need to be easily referenced by whichever business wants to use it, whether it's local corporate corporations or whatever it might be. I don't want to exclude our local businesses from the same opportunities that corporations have because we feel they would be better for the community. I think our locals always need to come first because most of them have been here for generations or at least longer than a corporation has. And usually the corporations have a ton more money. Minimum threshold, I don't know what the minimum looks like, but I think that's something we should probably look at. From what I know about the payment in lieu of taxes, I don't think I'm for it unless you can convince me why we should be doing it.
There could be situations where it would make a lot of sense and the hotel attempted to do this and it, you know, obviously didn't necessarily play out that well, but you don't have to give them 100%.
Okay.
You can give them half.
Right.
And then you can get the other half, you know, it's a negotiating tool. We used it one other time in our history. We issued some IRBs for a tax credit project and the developer offered it before we even got in the room that said, you know, with that I get a sales tax exemption on my construction, I'll make a $30,000 payment to the city.
Okay.
And we took that and obviously used it for other reasons, but yeah, you can negotiate a little bit there, so.
So I don't mind that. The competition clause, it doesn't matter to me whether it's in or out competition is what we're about and that's a given, I think. I know when I was, when we were in that hot discussion about the garage for the Marriott and I was trying to look at other things, IRBs, the thing that popped out to me was places, some other places, and I think even me, the Kansas statute had property taxes along with sales tax. So that kind of made me a little bit more apprehensive because we're looking at property taxes. But our city says sales tax.
That's the abatement side.
Yeah.
That's the tax abatement, that's when you get into property tax. And IRB can be a vehicle for that.
Right. But the current one that we had for the Marriott and the garage, it was mainly for sales tax.
Correct. Didn't include a property tax.
And I think that was true for all of the others that we had approved was just sales tax.
With the exception of Civics Plus and Offlornce.
Right. So the others, that's what made me comfortable, that we weren't doing the property tax. If we were to put that in, then we, the city commission has the authority to move forward or to discuss it and think maybe that's not a good idea for this, for the city of Manhattan. And that's why you bring it to us so we can have that thorough discussion. And I think we usually do a pretty good job for the city of Manhattan and sometimes the discussions may seem like we're against something, but it's not necessarily against it, it's trying to vet every scenario out and see if it is a good fit. But I think for the most part, we've done right by the IRBs, so.
Yeah, I'll just kind of quickly repeat. I think all of these are tools that should be in an umbrella to economic policy. I think flexibility is important and I think some of this, like minimum threshold, has to do with your ROI or even wanting to give some incentive to a local business that might want to expand. And I would do away with the competition clause because it's confusing and I'm not sure how many descriptors you could write in there, it would still catch somebody. So I just don't like having things that you have to make exceptions to, even though it's completely open, it just looks cleaner, more understandable to the public and everything if you just don't include that. And I mean, part of what we have to do is determine what we're doing, you know, if we're disadvantaging somebody, that ought to be part of the discussion.
I tend to agree with Mike that this is an umbrella and the tools are there for us to apply as they are appropriate. Can coincide with IRB financing. I think I read in here that if they get an IRB and a tax abatement, then we go by the tax abatement policy.
Yeah, that, I'm sorry, that comment meant more about sales tax exemptions.
Okay.
It's like if you qualify for IRBs, you qualify for an abatement, it's just automatic.
Okay, all right. The only thing we're talking about here is sales tax exemption. We really aren't examining the other.
No, we are and.
We are.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we touched on this, but this, these other policy areas, which many of the comments have been about.
Right, okay.
You know, just in terms of what do we want, what do we want to include, how comprehensive do we want to be?
Okay.
And so, yeah, this area is basically what we're seeing in other policies.
Okay. I don't know what to say about the desire for a minimum threshold of investment, that we can't even envision what the future is, so I, that's difficult to speak to. With regard to instances where payment in lieu of taxes, and that's sales tax, right?
Yeah, there'd be a payment in lieu for leveraging that.
Could be either.
It could be.
Okay.
The percentage of the exemption is typically what you negotiate in an abatement. Because you can go anywhere from.
That's where you said it could be 50%.
It could be 10%, 20%, all the way up to 90 or 100.
All right. And you typically would vet that at your level before it comes to us?
Yeah, I think an example would be, as Jason mentioned, where, you know, maybe there's a certain amount of product or material that they're going to buy locally and if you're exempting the sales tax, they calculate what we would have received and they go ahead and give us that as a payment in lieu of taxes, but they still get the full sales tax exemption. You know, the.
We get our little piece.
And through this pilot, they give us our share of that and then we can distribute it to the others that would have received some of that too, if that's something we want to do.
If there's any left.
The one thing that I wanted to visit a little bit about was, and Jason, you can help me here, but I don't think, I think the only thing we've done residential-wise has been tax credit applications. I don't think we've given any incentives for.
Metal Arc.
Metal Arc, specialty, retirement.
Yep.
Probably fits, so that might be something, I mean, that would be one of those benchmark where you're going to say, you know, we're not, we're not going to incentivize the links, you know, that for sales tax exemption.
More apartments.
Obviously, there are, there's heavy competition in that field, so bringing that factor back in. So there may be some areas that we want to delineate potentially that says we're, you know, we're only going to consider sales tax exemption and probably not property tax exemption for any of those, although I recall, I think, the first Metal Arc, oh no, that was machinery and equipment. So before, a lot of the companies would ask us for an abatement on machinery, equipment, property tax abatement, and then the legislature just gave them a blanket exemption. But if that was ever to come out, I think we would see that again, especially from some heavy manufacturers where that really piles up.
If we, the residential side of it, so I actually was thinking that as well, but then I ended up not asking the question because I figured we would treat a landlord who owned a business that was looking to expand or an apartment complex the same way we would treat any other business. But if we decided, which I don't, I don't actually, I mean, I'd need to explore more, but I don't think I'd support that just from the surface level thinking of it, but if we did move forward with that, how would we parcel out the tax incentives that you get potentially from the state for things like developing low-income housing from what you might get from the city? Because that senior development that we just approved, so the city commission had to approve that for them to get the state tax credit, correct?
So we didn't have to approve it.
So we didn't have to.
They just asked us for their support.
Got it.
So it's a, it just helps in the state's review that the locals are saying, yeah, we want this kind of housing in our community and we're acceptable of it and we urge you to consider their application for tax credits. Because that, to me, that really is an example of affordable housing, you know, whether it's senior housing or regular tax credit, so, and those vary greatly. I mean, you have, we have examples out on SNC where you have half of the, help me with the name.
Heritage.
Heritage is tax credit and half of its market, you know, there's no difference. You know, that was one of the issues when we did our first tax credit project proposal in Northview was, you know, everybody, oh, this is hut housing, you know, it's very, it's all the same, you know, you'd pay this rent in this room if your income was, didn't meet the standards, you would pay market rent for the same room, you know, so.
I would.
We've been successful in providing some and actually we've got a report we're working on that's going to show you how much we've added over, you know, the last decade of affordable, the Chodos is another one, where the Chodos building affordable housing. And that's where we can try to leverage too, because actually those units could be, you know, a third this level, a third, you know, you can ask that developer to broaden those ranges, so there's, there's three levels of affordable housing within the same complex.
That's something that I would hope that we would have a broader discussion on because I would, I would hate it, part of this policy, us make a blanket where we limit residential. I actually think there's some ideas on where we could utilize some of these things to encourage on the city level without utilizing state federal taxes, tax credits to encourage some of these things. So I would just want to make sure that we kind of explored some of those ideas and what the repercussions of doing something like that would be, because obviously affordable housing is a very present and real issue in our community. So I just want to, I want to make sure I fully understand that before we decide.
Yeah, I think we'd want to, if we made a comment about affordable housing and utilizing that, you'd still want to have some flexibility built into that.
Yeah, thank you. And Lawrence just adopted a lot of policies relative to affordable housing in their economic development incentives. So there's some, there's some guiding, you know, type of language there.
They also have a large influx of money coming in to help with affordable housing to encourage development, so they have a little bit more flexibility in that area than we do.
They've definitely taken a position.
Yeah.
Let me go on. I would like to remove the word, the competition clause too. I tripped over that pretty heavy before. The other thing I am concerned about is when we give tax incentives to an entity, I'm becoming more and more concerned about that entity paying their property taxes and not going to the Board of Zoning Appeal, or, I'm sorry, Board of Tax Appeals and getting out of it. And so I don't know how we do it, but I want something, I mean, we talk about clawbacks for economic development, letting the water drain out of the tub at some other, in some other drain, it just seems to me to be just plain foolish if, and so I don't know that you can, and I saw you looking at the old.
Yeah, it's a tough area. I mean, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
We've talked about it and we've talked about actually putting it in certain, you know, if we have an agreement, I just don't know.
Yeah.
There's just something constitutional about being able to challenge a value.
Has Lawrence ever done it yet?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'd really look to our attorneys to even know, can you do it? Can you restrict someone from challenging the valuation of their property?
Really not.
If incentives are still active.
Actually, we actually have done that.
Yeah, okay.
In the original Tiff district with the mall, we put provisions there that they could not appeal their valuation because those tax revenues were germane to the bonds we issued under Tiff. So I know we did it there.
And we own the land. And we own the land, yeah?
Yeah, so.
I don't know. I don't know what, how to do it. Some wizard would have to do it, but we have to stop that, and I don't know.
I suspect you probably, in the IRB context, you might not be able to prevent them from appealing in their valuation, but you might be able to put a provision in that the abatement goes away.
Ah, if they do.
If they do that, so.
And annually, we have to certify that abatement.
Yeah, very good.
So every year, we get certifications from the county that we have to submit through the city, through the county and the state. They come through the clerk's office, they process those. And I saw in some of those policies that there's actually fees associated with that that we don't charge, but there's also discretion.
Okay.
And some of that could be based on the performance that we require of them.
I do agree with the mayor. I think one of the things we have to realize is it's taxpayer money, so they're getting incentives, and our taxpayers are picking up the tab for whatever it is they're not paying. And they shouldn't have a second round at it again. And if we can put in something like you lose this if you do this, I think we need to do that. Otherwise, it's a double whammy on our taxpayers. If they can only pay half of property tax, whatever the corporate company that comes in and they're only paying 50% of their property tax, somebody's got to pay that other 50% and it'll be our taxpayers. And if they already got the sales tax rebate, that's twice as much. So I think we need to look at doing, I don't know what that looks like. I think we also need to work with our legislators on some of these issues, but I think that's something we need to figure out how that fits into documents and other cities that are already doing that. Otherwise, they, our taxpayers shouldn't have to be paying it twice or three times even for some of these things.
I think we're, are there questions from the commission, or should we move on? I will, yeah, I will. But I just want to be sure we're through. Are there members of the public here that would like to speak to this issue? Or two? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that opportunity. And thank you very much, Jason. If, I, hold on. The next item is the, well, have I done everything? Public comments, close. Yeah, close the public comments. And then I'd like to, the next item on the agenda is a discussion item with regard to community improvement districts called CID. And the presenter is Jared Wassinger, Assistant to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So with the discussions on tax increment financing, industrial revenue bonds, the tax abatement, we wanted to kind of bring forth another economic development tool that's available in the state that other cities in Kansas are using. So we wanted to just bring this forth so we could have some discussion, introduce you to the tool, and then see if the commission wanted to maybe move forward with a similar policy like we do with IRBs. So I'm just going to kind of go over CID's in general, and then go into a little bit more detail on the statutory requirements when it comes to the Community Improvement District Act. And then I'm going to go into a little bit of comparison of CID's and TDD's, Transportation Development Districts. They are very similar, but CID is much more broad tool. And then kind of look at what other cities in Kansas are doing when it comes to their CID policies that they've adopted, and see how we want to move forward. So CID allows a district to establish a new revenue source to finance public or private real estate improvements. And these revenues that fund these improvements can be through a special assessment or a district-only sales tax within the district that's defined. And these revenues can be used very broadly, pretty much for anything, public or private development. So new construction, a renovation redevelopment, an acquisition of property, it can even go as far as, you know, maintenance of the facility, a security of the district or a facility in the area. So we wanted to bring this forward because this has been something that developers have approached the city with in the past, but we don't, because it's such a broad economic development tool, and we don't have a policy that really guides administration and the governing body on how to approve a CID, we've kind of steered them toward TDD's, so. The Community Improvement District Act, it was approved by the state in 2009. So when a community improvement district and property owners come forth and they want to establish a district, and they have some projects that they want to do within that district, they can finance that project through a number of ways. They can use special obligation bonds, which would really be funded through just those CID revenues that are created in the district. You can go further with general obligation bonds, that's something that's not allowed within transportation development districts, or you can do a pay-as-you-go financing method. So CID revenue sources, like I said, you could do special assessments through property taxes, much like you see in a benefit district, or you could do a district-only sales tax. So the current city sales tax is 8.95%, so you could add on additional sales tax to that, much like a TDD. So if you're at McDonald's on Fourth and Blument, you pay 9.45% I believe in sales tax, and a half cent sales tax goes to the funding of that transportation development district, so similar to a CID. And one thing with CID's you can do is the city can offer full faith and credit of the city, so that if in the event that the city feels that they would like to participate financially in a project, they could do that if that circumstance came to be. There's really two avenues to form a CID, so if you're only doing special assessments and you have 100% of the property owners within the district willing to support the CID, really what they'll do is those property owners will file a petition, which basically goes over the project scope that I described with the financing method, what the project is going to consist of, how funds are going to be spent, and then commission can proceed with or without a public hearing and approve the CID right there. If a CID is proposing the use of sales tax, general obligation bonds, or if there's not 100% property owner support, it's a little bit more difficult to form a CID. You need to get 55% of property owners to file that petition, and then you have to proceed with that public hearing process. And then the commission can move forward with adopting a CID.
Jared, could you go back just?
Yeah, of course.
So when you say 55% of property owners' land and assessed value, so if one owner owns 45% of the land, and let's say there's like six or seven other properties, they would be part of that huge majority to increase it, right?
Yes, but it would also have, it'd be the land and the assessed value. So if one property owner owns 55% of the land, but of the total assessed value of the district, it's only maybe 35%, and it's just that one property owner, then it wouldn't qualify as 55%.
Okay, thanks.
So like I was saying before, the eligible project cost can really, it can go very far when it comes to how you can use your CID revenues according to the Community Improvement District Act. So that's public or private facilities and structures, goes into streetscape, transportation and public infrastructure, or private infrastructure. It goes into lakes, airports, and then it even gets into kind of some of those service functions I was discussing when it comes to security, maintenance, advertising, even going into, to a certain extent, economic impact studies of what the CID will generate over time. So just to kind of put community improvement districts and transportation development districts side by side, so you can kind of see how much more you can accomplish with a CID, there is a couple other financing methods when it comes to the general obligation bonds that you can use. When it comes to a sales tax, you can go up to 2%, whereas in a transportation development district, you can only go up to 1% above the current sales tax rate. And then, again, when it comes to eligible project costs, a TDD, you're really limited to public transportation infrastructure. That can be outside, in a TDD, that public infrastructure can be outside of the defined district, whereas in a CID, all of your revenue goes, has to go into the district that's defined. So there is one difference there. So I did provide you some CID policies from other cities in Kansas, and I tried to put together that matrix of some of the policy provisions, so you didn't have to read through all of those in that table. And really, that table kind of goes through some policy provisions that cities have put in their CID economic development policy that differs from the state statute. So when it comes to project eligibility, kind of like the things we described with the IRB policy, what kind of projects do we want to approve when it comes to a CID? Is it, does it provide an economic benefit? Is it in an area where we want to see economic development occur? They also, some of them address ineligible project costs. So if you looked at that statute and that list of all those projects that are eligible, certain cities decided that they didn't think that CID should cover some of those costs. So they may be scratched off or removed some of those projects in that list, and then they also may be brought in other projects that they didn't want to see occur. Again, the kind of, the minimum total project cost for a CID, so certain cities wanted to say that if we're going to look at a CID, it's going to have to at least be an investment of $200,000 or $500,000. And then a lot of cities wanted to see a percent commitment from the property owners in private financial development. And then, of course, there's application and administrative fees. So I did bring up the, just a screenshot of some of the other cities and their policies. As you can see, they go into eligibility requirements when it comes to the areas, enhancing retail, promoting the arts or, you know, cultural areas in a, in a community that Salina brings in fairness and private financing and how much risk is involved. Olathe, you know, they made it ineligible for you to invest in or construct a private building. They scratched out the provision in the CID Act about indoor cultural amenities, security and maintenance for those eligible CID revenues. As you can see, there's some minimum costs, a lot of them have the application fee, kind of like we do with IRBs. Another provision within the CID Act is that you can take up to 5% of the project cost or CID revenues that are generated, and then the city can receive that as an administrative fee. So you can see Olathe, they went all the way up to 5%, and the city received that administrative fee, whereas others went lower with that percentage. Couple other items, you know, Lawrence, they wanted all property owners to be in line with adopting the CID.
So Jared, when I was looking at the other notes, I think at least three out of the six wanted 100% of their property owner's signatures. And did we say 55%? I mean, am I reading that wrong?
So the 55% provision, when it comes to a sales tax or a geo bond, or if 100% of the property owners are not in favor of it, according to the state statute, you have to at least get 55%. These.
For the CID's?
For the CID's, yes. So these cities are saying, we're going to make that a little bit more stringent, and we're not going to let only 55% or more. We want it to be 100.
Yeah, Lawrence and Topeka and Hayes, I think, not Hayes.
Yeah, it looks like Topeka.
Wichita.
Wichita.
So they're going for 100% of the property owners. So I just, I just want to look at that a little bit closer, but as far as the numbers, because sometimes even in the City Commission, we've had those discussions about a supermajority and all of this when it comes to certain petitions or whatever it might be, whether it's for a benefit district or however that might look. So I don't want there to be any type of, when we have a certain percentage, less than 100%, I want to be clear about what that is. So that's why I asked you that percentage question.
An example where that might come into play, and actually, we've had some CID proposals in the Aggieville area, and that just, there's so many businesses, if you were going to do something for a streetscape or facades, and so getting 100% participation from every property owner in that district would be a challenge.
Right.
So maybe it's not 55, but maybe it's 75.
I'm thinking it should be a little bit higher than 55, a little less than 100.
As opposed to somebody who's just, you know, maybe, you know, Village Plaza, where there's a property owner.
Mainly because it impacts what they're paying, and I would understand that concern from it.
Well, I think that about covers my presentation. Really, we didn't want to put in front of you a bunch of bullet points so we could adopt a policy, you know, at the next legislative meeting. We really just wanted to get your feedback on, what do you think about this economic development tool? Is it something we should pursue as a policy and we can bring something back with you and have some more discussion? Do we want to incorporate it, you know, within an economic development policy like Jason was alluding to earlier?
So I have a few questions. First, in this policy, and maybe it's something that we decide, but what's defined as a district?
So the district is defined by the property owners that filed the petition.
So if I were a property owner, and let's say I had acquired six lots on Muma Street, could I file a CID district with the city? I'm the sole property owner, I own six lots, I want a tax incentive to redevelop those six lots with the city.
Yeah, you would be able to define that district around that area, and with your petition that you came forward, you would outline that district, and then you would say what, how you would want to create a CID revenue, so special assessments or sales tax, and then you would put forth what project improvements you would spend that money on.
Do you see other cities limit, like, to me, when you do that, and almost, and maybe this isn't a bad thing, but when you do that, it almost becomes an incentives just for developers, right? It becomes, in my opinion, a little less of incentive for multiple property owners to come together in a neighborhood and do something. So do you, do you see other cities like putting a limit on maybe like the minimum amount of property owners that have to be involved? Or, I mean, if one, one property owner owns all these lots and they want to have their own CID district, they're cool with it as long as it meets their minimum investment thresholds?
I haven't seen that in other policies. I think this is a tool that will help for redevelopments, so existing districts, you know, not just a developer coming into a new district, but if you're in a specific commercial district that is, you know, is maybe blighted or needs redevelopment, you can see those separate property owners coming together to try and form something like this.
So most of the CID's genesis has been in redeveloping property. Not, it doesn't have to be exclusively there, so, you know, if you wanted to put a Starbucks or something like, you know, a coffee franchise, you don't need a big area. But if you're doing, generally speaking, one of the bigger costs of redevelopment is property acquisition. And so that's where it comes into play, especially if you were, so we were approached by a developer prior to the Blument Hotel going in there. Will that land there? I mean, that's the highest-priced square footage in the city almost, except for next to Walmart. So, you know, that, those are just some of that cost, you know, and so, and then you typically would want a sales tax producer for whatever you put there. So it's, it kind of really depends on what you want to do, but it's developed to be something that helps generate sales tax because you're going to self-impose that on your shoppers.
So is it typically aimed at commercial redevelopment?
Typically. I mean, I haven't seen CID's, maybe some mixed use.
Just inherently in the sales tax being what you're capturing? Just inherently, and the sales tax being what you're capturing, it has to generate sales. So residential areas, maybe a mixed-use project. The project that I was going to bring up was McCall Road. McCall Road is, you know, clearly, we were abiding in McCall Road. We were putting in signals. We were making multimillion-dollar improvements, and we were looking for a tool. We ended up using a benefit district because we basically assessed both sides of the street. They benefited from the project, and it's a property tax. You know, it comes as a special assessment. With this tool, you can mix in special assessments, but primarily, a TDD or a CID would have been helpful. TDD's have been something we've used several times. It clearly is more advantageous...it's easier for a developer who owns all the property to establish these things. To go into established neighborhoods or established districts and try to get one of these done, there are some big hurdles.
See, that's one of the reasons why I was asking. If it was mostly aimed at commercial, I mean, that makes total sense, and I could see how this would be a really useful tool. But my line of questioning was leading to one of the things that I've really thought about, and it's only occurred to me now that I'm hunting for houses, we have these established older neighborhoods, and then we have a lot of new builds and new developments. So is there a way that we can encourage people to invest in those older neighborhoods and a 100-year-old home that they're going to have to probably fix up a little bit, rather than just all the new developments, so we make sure that we maintain those neighborhoods and their values? And so I thought maybe with the special assessment portion, that might be a way that you could do that, but...
And Lawrence is another good example. They have neighborhood revitalization program areas. And these neighborhood revitalization areas, through the participation of the city, the county, and the school district, will rebate you back increases in property taxes after you've made your investment. Junction City used this in commercial districts. Other communities have as well, but it is an additional tool, and it's one of those that it's just... it's cumbersome in our community to do it because of the rental market and creating incentives for others to, you know, create these rental units. But you could limit it to just single family. You could go through the affidavit process that Chad was outlining for you, and make sure you're dealing with people who occupy their homes and are going to make these investments. It can be set up. We had, it's been a decade or so since we've even looked at the program, but the county does the majority of the work because the county appraiser goes out and actually values properties. So he would have to establish a value before and after. County treasurer would cut you a check because they would collect the taxes, have to siphon them off, and then cut you back. So it's a county...it's a heavy county staffing program. So if they don't want to participate, it can get tough to do.
That makes sense. And then just last question. On the cities that have done this, the ones that don't have minimum project costs, so does that mean if they're in a CID district, no matter how small the improvement, they could apply for this benefit, correct? Is there...is there an advantage to allowing that? It seems to me like you would kind of want to set a minimum, but is there a reason inherently that Lawrence and Olathe chose to go that direction that you would know of?
I think that'd be up for the commission to decide that, but when you think about it, is a $50,000 improvement worth all the work of creating a CID, or will it bring that economic development improvement to, you know, looking at that criteria, is it going to bring, you know, redevelopment or revitalization in your commercial area? Is it going to increase retail?
Yeah, because some of these significantly, $2 million, $1 million. So that would just be...I would want to have a minimum, but I'm not sure where that number should fall, so.
See, I'm thinking about the minimums, and I'm looking at this CID, and I remember a few years ago, we had that issue along the new highway there, Warner Park. All those folks wanting to put a noise barrier fence up, which would meet the streetscape, and they couldn't agree, and it all fell to pieces eventually. But this could have applied to that. If they could have got 100% to agree, it would have been a, you know, smooth process. It would have been done. It would have been a special assess to all of them. That should have worked, right?
They could have gone the property tax route.
Yeah, that's how they would have had to do it, because clearly, they couldn't do sales tax. So that's why I wouldn't put a minimum on there, because there's a possibility that if you got, you know, 12 or 14 homeowners to agree on a stretch that they wanted to put in a, you know, a noise barrier fence, which was the idea, or there's a couple of lakes over here on the east side that are full of algae, if they wanted to do this to fix the lake, you know, I think there's some possibilities for that, so I...
And the benefit district tool today would allow them to do the same.
Right, they can do that too. But I'm for putting this in the toolbox, you know, put it in there. As Mike says, it's an economic development tool. Let's not close the door on any of them.
One of the examples that was mentioned was McCall Road. So that really is a great example after Walmart. So really, when Menards came to town, you remember, we approved...we improved McCall to Hayes, and then it was the old McCall. But when Menards came to town, we actually tried to press them to do a TDD, and they said, from their competition in lumber, it was...they would not meet their margin. So but if we had a CID where they would have benefited, they could have done some of their entry drive or their parking lot, and they would have received more benefit. I think they would have done it. But...and so that alone kind of aspect to where we ended up doing a benefit district. So they still participated, but I think had we done that, we may have gotten most of McCall done. And Pot County came to the table too and helped participate in that too. So that's a good example, I think, of where advancing to the CID tool components than just the TDD, which limited you to the right-of-way public improvements, makes some sense potentially for a particular project.
I'd like to just state that I support this, and I think moving it forward as the other economic development policies is something we ought to do. And I appreciate the research you've done with the other Kansas cities. I don't know about the details necessarily, but I...tonight, I don't want to listen to me talk about it either, so.
Well, that's something we can definitely bring back, and we'll look at our other economic development policies to mirror those.
Yeah, when you come back, what I'd just ask you to do is run down that menu of the other cities and put something in all those blocks that is good for Manhattan. I'd want some targets. Any exclusions that come to your mind, we ought to have a discussion about that, the thresholds, and minimum investment and so on. It all comes back to ROI, really, if you can, just like we did on scenic crossing. We had to find ways to pay for it, but, I mean, that's why you kind of do this research.
Okay. Are there other Commissioner comments?
I just think it's...this gives us, our community, more options, along with TDD and benefit districts, not just corporations. So this is something that's accessible to any neighborhood, any district, anywhere. So I...yeah. Except I don't like the 55%. We need to increase that somewhere between 55 and 100, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to ask if there are public comments?
Thank you for agreeing to put all these in the toolbox. One thing that I think you're all aware of is the state has taken away a lot of economic development incentives that we in Manhattan used to use. And so it's more important than ever to have as many tools that we use responsibly in our community. And so I thank you for your willingness to keep adding to this because we keep getting things taken away. And Trent reminded me that actually, the legislature, or at least one person in the legislature, would like to take this CID away. So we don't want to see that, but thank you. I just wanted to let you know that I think the public needs to understand that we're seeing less incentives coming from the state, and we need to have these in our toolbox to use, and I think it'll make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. We appreciate it. Anyone else, please? Okay, seeing no one else, I will close the public comment period and adjourn.